Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It's 7:00 PM. Let me call to order the meeting of the Merrimack Planning Board for January 8th, 2019. Let me appoint Nelson into a voting position in for Michael Redding, who's not here tonight. Also, as a reminder, everyone who will address the board, please sign in on the clipboard on this table in front of me and make sure the microphone is turned on. You speak clearly into it so the folks at home can hear you. By way of announcement, our next planning board meeting after tonight is January 22nd, 2019, at 7:00 PM in the Matthew Thornton Room. Also, by way of announcement, we've got two items on our agenda tonight for which the applicants have asked for continuances, and I would expect the board would grant them. And I wanted to announce them so that you don't have to stay around waiting for them to come up. That's item number six, which is Mark Rivet's proposal for site plan review, and item seven, the Wired or Y-Red Barn LLC doggy daycare proposal. Both of those have asked for continuances, and if you're here waiting to address the board on those, you need not stay. I would anticipate the board would grant those continuances, and there wouldn't be any substantive discussion on those. So, see you next time on those. Completing the call to order, our next item of business is the Planning and Zoning Administrators' Report. Robert, do you have anything for us?
Nope, nothing this evening.
Are there any questions by members of the board for staff?
Nope.
Excellent. Item three on our agenda is Arnie LLC as the applicant and owner. Continued review for consideration of final approval for a two-lot subdivision. The parcel's located at 63 Wilson Hill Road in the R1 residential by zoning map and Aquifer Conservation Districts. It is tax map 4B, Lot 130. The item is continued from our December 4th, 2018, board meeting. And also note that we had a site walk on this site on December...
29th.
29th. And the minutes of that site walk are present in the package that the board has to consider. With that, Robert, is there anything we need to know before we hear from the applicant?
Nope, I just turn it over to Attorney Michael.
I will do so as well.
Attorney Greg Michael, good evening, Chairman, members of the board. Happy New Year. When we left off, there were a number of abudders that expressed some concerns about blasting, drainage, taking a site walk. The board voted for a site walk. There's a slight portion that was in the aquifer zone. We went to the Conservation Commission, so a number of items were completed prior to coming back this evening. We believe the plan is ready. At the outset, I would point out that we don't need to blast. I want to state that. We don't need to blast to complete the project. That was a concern expressed by a number of folks, and we have no intention of blasting where we would build. We have good soils. We're able to make this work without blasting. Drainage, there were concerns about drainage. Again, it's a single-family residential on a greater than two-acre parcel. In this instance, we had a further study done. We've added a drainage, kind of a detention area. It's in the report that Mike Severt filed with the board. You should have that report, and we believe that we've managed drainage. We will not be impacting any of the abutting owners. That was a strong point of contention at the last meeting. We're entitled to use our property. We're entitled to develop our property. But again, we want to make sure that we're not impacting any of the abutting owners, and we will not be impacting abutting owners with our drainage. There were comments about the driveway. We are planning a hammerhead. I've got another plan I can flip up and show you, the engineering plan that will be appearing on the final subdivision plan, and we will remove the contour lines from the final plan as recommended or requested by staff. I can tell you that. And that is going to be there to facilitate emergency vehicle turnarounds in the event of fires or other emergency. The fire department has also remarked that they want to make sure that the road can support the equipment. We will do that. We're prepared to do that, consistent with the staff report. In addition, to the extent necessary, I spoke to Scott Bedrow, who's next to me here this evening, our surveyor on this, and we've marked the 25-foot from centerline point on the frontage of the plan. It may be, we may be approximately a foot short, and I'm making it clear for the record, we're prepared to dedicate that foot or two by easement or shown on the, it'll be shown on the plan to allow future road widening to ensure that there is the full 50-foot Town of Merrimack road easement, if you will, for future modifications to Wilson Hill Road. I want to make it clear that we're prepared to do that as part of this plan. The common driveway, those brief discussions, as the board is well aware, I've drafted many common driveway easements, restrictions, covenants, use whatever word you like, it doesn't matter to me, that have worked successfully. We plan to do that for the two houses. That will be reflected on the plan, and a separate document will be executed and filed with the registry to ensure that there is a remedy, that there is a way to enforce it, to allow both houses to use the driveway, which is one road cut, which ordinarily is preferred by the board. That will be reviewed by Town Council again for approval. The board talked about the soils. We did have a soils person go out. That was prior to the meeting that we had back on, I believe it was December 4th. Ambit Engineering was out there. They will be signing off on the subdivision plan to provide the final soil certification, and I believe that's one of the comments that staff has made in their report. At this point, in order to, I don't mean to shorten the proceedings, but there's no sense me talking all night. I don't want to. You've got other things to hear this evening. We are okay, if you will, with the staff memo dated January 2nd, 2019. The staff has taken a close look at the plan, and we're prepared to make the, I believe, minor adjustments as it relates to the plan as proposed, consistent with that report that's been filed with you. On that, I think I'll stop talking, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you, Attorney Michael, for the presentation and for the update. I have a couple of minor questions.
Go ahead.
For the sake of the public hearing, can you point out on a plan where the new drainage feature is that you mentioned?
I've got a plan that'll show it.
And we've got one here too, but I just want to make sure it's visible for the public.
It's not yet on this.
Okay.
It will be transposed onto the final subdivision plan, but what we have is an infiltration, detention kind of area. I'm showing it to you here. It's off where the proposed house would be located in this location, which is basically across from the driveway area. Let me go back to the other point and let me try to show it to you a little bit better. It's going to be right in this area here.
Okay.
So, yeah, it is, and that's an integral part of the drainage report that relates to the project that was given to you.
Okay. So, on the same plan that you showed before, as well as on this one, actually, when we were out on the site, we noticed that there's a culvert or underdrain underneath the existing driveway, and I think that I see it shown here by one single unbroken line kind of going across the driveway, but it doesn't look like the way a culvert's usually shown. And I was wondering if...
I mean, our driveway, not the road.
Correct. Your driveway. Okay. So, the single horizontal line is intended to represent...
Yeah, that is the culvert there.
Is there a way that we can have that labeled or somehow indicated as a culvert?
We can label that on the plan, Mr. Chairman. It's not a problem.
The only other question that I have before I see if other board members do as well is, I understand there's some question about the steepness of the driveway and whether that was suitable for the fire department or appropriate. Did you get a chance to look into that, or do you know what the concern was in the first place?
Well, I believe they've looked at it. What appears in the memo, of course, is that they want the road widened, they want to make sure it's 16 feet, they want to make sure it's sufficient, as I mentioned earlier, that it can withstand the widths of the machines, and we're prepared to do those things. I mean, the driveway itself has been there for quite some time. That's the platted way in and out, which we have always intended to use. As I said, it's part of the site and has been there for many years, over 30 years.
Understood. I just didn't know whether anyone could quantify what the slope of it is and whether that suits the fire department's needs. I think 8% is what our regulations would normally require.
And we haven't gotten a memo. I believe the fire department is going to be, I guess, submitting a memo in that regard. I haven't seen that.
Okay.
And one of the staff recommendations is getting the final report from the fire department.
Yeah. The hammerhead addition is perfect. I know that that's something that they would ask for. So, Robert, is the fire department given kind of a final consent to the setup of this, or is that still kind of outstanding?
They have commented, and the comments that they gave are in the staff memo. That's what we have. The comments that the fire department gave appear in the staff memo.
Okay. So, Mr. Chairman, could I wait?
Hang on one second. Yep.
We have not received the final plan showing the hammerhead or the layout of the driveway at this point, and to respond to Mr. Attorney Michael's, the existing driveway has been there for 30-plus years, serving one house. It is now a shared driveway serving two houses, which is why we're concerned about the slope and such.
Interested. Thank you, Captain.
And could I add in?
Robert, can you point out which part of the memo is that we're looking at here?
So, you are looking under general and subsequent conditions, number four.
Page three of three.
Number three.
Page three of three, four.
Four. Okay, Alistair, please go ahead.
And I hear what Attorney Michael says, it's been there for a long time, but we also received testimony from, during the site walk, that during inclement weather, the owner of the house never got the car up the driveway because it was too steep. So, please don't use the existing, and it's been there forever, is not a buy-in to me. I think that driveway is very steep. I wouldn't like to pull my car up it tonight, never mind any other thing. So, I think it's something you have to address.
I don't know what the, sometimes things that look steep end up being within 8% or 10%, because it's hard to judge that thing when you're just looking at it. But I think that the comment at number four and building the roads and accessways completed to town specs, I think it implicitly includes the requirement that the slopes be right, but even if it doesn't, I think explicitly the board should attend to that requirement and ask that that be part of what the approval is, that the driveway be 8%. Or the applicant request a waiver for that and propose it. I don't have any other comments or questions about it. I did, I can certainly tell you what my experience was from walking the site. We did walk it very, very thoroughly, the entire boundary and up the middle and down to Wilson Hill Road, and there's certainly water present on the site, but it's nothing that I saw that struck me water-wise as being unmanageable or likely to cause erosion or the kinds of issues that I was worried about before we had gone out to the site. I think that there's a bit of a flat area and a little bit of a swale before you get to Wilson Hill Road that would slow down the water. It's very well-forested now, and there's no sign of erosion or any indication that the steepness has caused any kind of washouts at Wilson Hill Road on the property. Some of the things in the back there appear to be seasonal, but everybody's internal property situation doesn't necessarily implicate planning board review. That's my thought of what I saw on the site visit. With that, I'll open it up for other members of the board to ask questions or offer their own comments. Tom? Nelson?
Just two quick things to reinforce what you said, Bob.
Touch your microphone, Nelson.
Bob, to reinforce what you said, I would agree the 4%, the 8% slope is what we'd be looking for on that, or amend it so it will be, and that would be important. The other thing that I think that I wanted to show was the underdrain on the existing driveway, and you've already agreed that that will be shown.
It'll be shown, Nelson.
It will be shown. And other than that one minor nit, Mr. Chairman, these minutes of the site walk should be approved by the board before we make any final action, so.
It's fine with me to do it that way. I don't know that it's necessary, but if you want to do it that way, it's fine.
Well, a suggestion, perhaps.
Sure, sure. It's easy enough to do. Other comments or questions by other members of the board? Tom?
I wanted to better understand how this infiltration trench or whatever is supposed to operate. It doesn't have an input or an output, it's just supposed to catch water and stop it from going further down the hill, or what's the plan there?
Basically, Bedrow, what infiltration trench does is it...
Scott, can you either pull the microphone closer or make sure that it's turned on? And I know that we have one of those that's a little squirrely.
Okay. So, an infiltration trench collects excess water, and it works like a leach field, just infiltrates into the soil.
So, it's just supposed to be a swale to catch what it can and infiltrate it into the ground, and if for whatever reason it rained hard enough to overflow it, that'd be probably unusual, but it would just overflow it, and then, okay.
Is there any design effort for a certain level of water or something? I don't see any specs. I just see a square here and a comment about a four-inch pipe down at the bottom of it or something like that. It just has me totally confused.
Did you see a report?
Pardon?
We had a report done that describes...
I don't have it, I'm sorry. I never saw it.
I just want to point out to you that we have pre-development, post-development, various storms, the 25-year storms. I mean, I'm not an engineer, so I'm not going to sit here and pretend to be one, but we did have a report done that shows that at the end of the day, which is really, I think, what the board was looking at at the last meeting, that we're not going to be, you know, sending any more water to any more people, either at a higher volume or more volume, which is what the board requires when we're doing a development plan.
Absolutely. That's what I'm trying to better understand.
We have this, and it gets into the numbers, the statistics, what it is, post-development, pre-development, the whole nine yards. I basically summarized it for you, which is that it does contain, we don't think we had a problem before, but we believe with the drainage, swale, trench, detention area, call it what you want, you're familiar with these, that there'll be no impact to any abutting owners. That's the long and the short of it, and I believe that staff has looked at that as well.
Okay. And you're telling me that this report describes how it's designed and used?
Basically, it does.
And that it's going to function for some level of water coming off of this house?
Apologize, I'll finish my engineering degree in a couple of years, and I'll... No, I mean, I don't mean to be, you know what I'm saying, but yeah, it does get into that.
I do get it. All I got was this piece of paper with something, a square, that says it's a drainage trench, and I apologize for not having more information.
Right here. The installation of the infiltration trench and the use of erosion, sediment controls, and proper construction practices will minimize the impact of this project to downstream surface water. So, basically, it's, there is no, the enclosed comparative hydrologic model provides sufficient evidence that there is no increase in peak rate of stormwater discharge resulting from the proposed development of the site. So, that's, I mean, that's all I can tell you.
Okay.
I mean, we did do a report to try and cover that issue.
No, thank you for that detail, Attorney Michael. The report is one that was received by staff, and it commented on the memo, but they didn't distribute to all the board members, and so that's really the disconnect there.
So, commented by staff, did our peer review look at it, or?
The staff indicated that it's signed, prepared to stand by a professional engineer, but didn't have it peer-reviewed. It's not normal for us to do the peer review on a two-lot subdivision like this.
Well, I understand, but, okay. For me, it doesn't look like it's going to do anything. If it overflows, it's going to put water out one end or the other, which is going to create a different kind of a problem. And so, I'm just curious about where the water goes that doesn't infiltrate, assuming it doesn't, and does it flow over it, or does it flow through that pipe and discharge out one end or the other? Is there a slope on it? Is it...
I get your questions. I'm no more of an engineer than Attorney Michael is, but...
That's not true. You are a better engineer.
Well, no, I'm not this kind of engineer. Do you have some comments on that?
Yeah, I haven't read the report, but I'm sure it's designed to handle a rain event larger than normal, just like a leach field is designed for so many bedrooms to handle all that.
Is that specified in the report? Tom, can I pass it over down here? You have the copy?
This is the report.
Well, I just want to scan through it to look for some...
It does take it through a 25-year storm.
Are there, let me allow some other questions to continue while I'm kind of scanning through this to see what it is that we've got.
Well, so I had another question. You said you have a hammerhead drawn in here, and I'm wondering if that's the little notch on the driveway that's drawn in? That's sufficient hammerhead, you believe, for the fire trucks?
Basically, what it does is it's currently a widened area here that allows a vehicle to pull in back into the, I'll use the term, the other driveways, the hammerhead and go out. So, you basically have a dual, the driveways across from each other serve now as a hammerhead for the main drive itself, Tom.
Okay, great. I was afraid you were talking about the little notch in front of the proposed house, and that didn't look like it would do squat to me, but I was hoping to better understand. Thank you.
Okay. Other comments or questions?
Yeah, I have one.
Neil?
So, you had indicated that you don't need to blast?
We do not need to blast.
But you also said that you have no intentions. So, how did you come to that conclusion that you won't have to blast?
Well, apparently, they've done some digging and test pits and stuff, septic, and taken a look at the soils and topography. The engineer came up with that. Again, not me, but I'm telling you now, representing to you, that as far, you know, if we had to blast, we'd have to come back and have another discussion. Right now, we do not need to blast.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Neil, for the question and for the explanation. I don't think that sort of me skimming through this drainage report is going to necessarily provide a whole lot more information that we already know about it, but we do have it for the record, and the staff has had a chance longer than I have to dig into it. If there's no other questions by members of the board, let's open up and receive some public comment.
Thank you.
If there is any. Thank you, Attorney Michael. Are there any abudders or citizens who wish to weigh in? None? None. No abudders or citizens wish to weigh in? Okay, then we'll close the public hearing.
I just...
Please.
Could I make one more comment about the driveway?
Of course.
We're not sure what it is. You know, I would hope that it could be, the plan could be approved, you know, subject to what the board feels is appropriate. If we've got to come back and deal with it after we get, you know, a further understanding of exactly what it is, then I guess that's what might have to happen.
I support the, personally, I support the course of action that you're describing, where you make it a condition of approval.
I just want to make that clear before you close this off. I don't want to be, you know, get shot in the foot over this, where, you know, we looked at it as an existing drive, and we could use it, but I respect what the board's thinking might be. I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you for that, and personally, I think that including it in the condition of approval that says you deal with the fire department's requirements and recommendations covers that.
Yeah, and we'd be happy to work with them in that regard, and have a chat with them.
Okay. Other comments or questions by members of the board? If not, then what's the will of the board?
Mr. Chairman, could I just make one comment?
Of course.
This was the first sidewalk in...
Sidewalk?
Site walk. Site walk, sorry, in approximately, I don't know, I've sat on this board for about 14 years, that was inadequately, and I use the term very sensibly, inadequately marked what the dividing lines were. The wetlands was clearly marked, and we had no trouble finding it, but there wasn't any real clear definition of where the subdivision lines were going to take place, and I was disappointed. In the past, we've always had a first-rate markings of where it was, and just as a criticism, and not more any more than a comment, I think it was an unfortunate lapse that we didn't have a clear indication of where we were walking, but that's a comment.
I would echo the same thing. We were ultimately able to kind of figure out our bearings and things, but there weren't the kind of usual markings that we usually get to tell us where the boundary lines are and what the features are so that we have our bearings. Other comments or questions? If not, then what's the will of the board?
Mr. Chairman, do you want to follow up Mr. Disco's comments and use the site walk minutes first?
If that's the will of the board?
I just wonder how feasible that is. You've already opened a hearing, you've got a case that's active, now you're taking up another other business item in the middle of that, and so I don't know how that really works.
That's a good point. I think that certainly we could take a look at the minutes and see if anybody would add anything to them as a part of this public hearing. Is there anything that anybody who was at the site walk thinks ought to be in the minutes that isn't there? Okay, so we know that when we get to the approval that we have the content that we think ought to be there. With that in mind, what's the will of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we grant conditional approval, subject to all the conditions in the memo dated January 2nd, 2019, from Mr. Thompson, together with the additional item that we require the slope of the driveway, et cetera, et cetera, to be approved by the fire department.
Is there a second for Alistair's motion?
I'll second.
Second by Neil?
And also that the culvert under the driveway will be labeled on the plan?
Oh, sorry, yes, and that the culvert is clearly marked on the plan.
Consistent with your motion, is that consistent with your second to add the culvert?
It is.
Okay. Does anyone wish to discuss the motion? Nelson?
Could I ask just a little bit about your wording? I was looking to make the 8% slope, and I think your wording was a little different than that.
What was my wording? His wording, but it was to satisfy the requirements of the fire department, whatever they may be, when this fire department's already indicated an intent to have it built to standard.
All right, then I'm satisfied. All right.
Any other comments or questions? Okay. Tom?
Well, I'm still disturbed by not understanding how we're going to, the impact of the water drainage and the fact that I thought the wetland markings were poor. There were markings out there, there was nothing to tell us what was wetlands versus something else, and I just, I don't want to delay this, but I'm uncomfortable with supporting this at the same time. It just, it seems like there's a few things still missing.
So, one part of your comment was that we saw some markings, and we kind of, among ourselves, thought that that meant they were wetlands, and whether we were right or not, I don't know, and...
We had absolutely nothing to say what marking meant what.
We saw...
There were some flags that weren't marked and some flags that were marked with some random sets of numbers, As and Bs, depending upon what side of the stream they were walking on.
I agree, and we may have puzzled out what we thought they were, but we may be wrong in what we thought we, what we saw, as far as the markings on the site visit. The other information that you're suggesting, being uncomfortable with, let that stand as your comment. I'm not necessarily joining you on that one. Other comments or questions before we vote? Okay, so the motion on the table is to give conditional final approval, subject to the conditions in the memo, plus the ones discussed here tonight. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
One opposed? Any abstaining? So, that is five to one to grant conditional final approval, subject to the conditions. Thank you, Attorney Michael. Let me find my agenda here. Next item on our agenda is item number four, Edgbrooke Heights LLC as the applicant, and Edgbrooke Heights LLC, Wigston Properties LLC, Q. Peter Nash, 1987 Revocable Trust, number one, as the owner's, continued review for acceptance and consideration of final approval for a boundary consolidation and subdivision plan. The parcels are located at 13739 and an unnumbered parcel off Daniel Webster Highway in the I-1 Industrial Aquifer Conservation and Flood Hazard Conservation Districts, Tax Map 1E, Lot 41, 42, and 2E, lots 7 and 8. This item is continued from the November 13th and December 4th, 2018, meeting. Unless there's objection from members of the board, I'd also like to read into the record item five and have a presentation of both of these items by the applicant at the same time, so that we avoid having some redundant presentations of essentially the same project. No objection? Then item number five is Edgbrooke Heights LLC as the applicant, and Edgbrooke Heights LLC, and Q. Peter Nash, 1987 Revocable Trust, number one, as the owner's, continued review for acceptance and consideration of a final approval for a site plan to construct 232 multifamily residences, 156 multifamily, and 76 elderly housing units, a clubhouse and associated site improvements per the requirements of the Edgbrooke conditional use permit. The parcel is located at 1 Daniel Webster Highway in the I-1 Industrial Aquifer Conservation and Flood Hazard Conservation Districts, Tax Map 1E, Lot 41 and 42, and Map 2E, lots 7 and 8. And this would be located on a newly configured Tax Map 1E, Lot 41, if we approve the subdivision item in number four. This item's continued from our November 13th and December 4th, 2018, meeting. Robert, is there anything that we need to know? Robert, is there anything that we need to know before we hear from the applicant?
Mr. Chair.
So as we proceed with this, since we're doing two items at once, at least with respect to accepting the applications as complete, when we move and vote, we'll be moving and voting on both of them being complete and accepted. After that, we can kind of parse out which pieces we're moving ahead with. If there's nothing from Robert, then please introduce yourself, tell us where we're at, and congratulations, or in order or not.
Thank you very much. I was busy last meeting, I'll say that.
Good for you. I'm certain, after having experienced last meeting, that you were having a better time than we were.
I should have brought coffee for everybody tonight. Well, good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. For the record, my name is Tom Zajak. I'm a civil engineer with Heiner Swanson, 3 Congress Street in Nashua, here tonight representing Edgebrook Heights LLC on their project located off of Daniel Webster Highway here in Merrimack. Joined here tonight by Attorney Brad Westgate, Adam Wagner from Market Square Architects, Kevin Slattery from Edgebrook Heights LLC, and Bob Simons from SMC Management, who will be purchasing, constructing, and operating the residential portion of the project. As you know, the conditional use approval, I'm sorry, the conditional use permit was approved on the December 4th meeting for the Edgebrook Heights mixed-use development project. We now like to move forward into the subsequent subdivision and site plan phases of the project. So, Mr. Chair, as you outlined, we're here tonight seeking approval for two cases, the first being a consolidation subdivision plan that will create the new lots in accordance with the approved CUP plan, and the second is the site plan for the first phase of the project to be known as the residences at Edgebrook. If it's okay, Mr. Chair, I'd like to provide an overview of both applications, and then the project team would be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thanks, Tom. Please proceed.
Before proceeding, I'd just like to take a step back and revisit a conversation that was had at the last meeting regarding the possibly flipping the elderly and commercial use at the end of the cul-de-sac to be known as Lot C. At the meeting, the board asked the project team to consider the possibility of swapping these two uses on the CUP plan. Since that meeting, our team has evaluated this potential change in detail and found that while there may be some benefits to this idea, we feel that it is best to move forward with the current layout for the following reasons. So one of the goals of the project was not only to create a mixed use throughout the site, but also to create a mixed use along our frontage, that our frontage wasn't too commercial. As discussed last meeting, our testimony was that certain commercial uses don't necessarily need direct frontage and exposure, which is what I'm specifically talking about, Lot C, the commercial lot. The current entrance drive provides a sense of arrival and balance and equal access to all lots, and also provides a degree of traffic calming as you enter and exit the project. The elderly housing program itself requires about a three-acre development pad to accommodate it, including building, parking, fire lanes, and everything that goes into a development site. Lot C, as it currently is drawn up, only contains about one acre of developable area, which is certainly not enough land to support the elderly housing program. Therefore, to swap both uses, it would require a major reconfiguration of the lots, entrance road, to create enough land for the elderly where the commercial is now. Under that scenario, the entrance road would turn sharply to the south, which would lose some of our design intent, again, the balance, the traffic calming, the equal access to all lots, and the road would favor the southerly side of the development. The elderly housing development, being three acres, would dominate the entrance of the project and be less contiguous with the clubhouse and the rest of the residential portion of the project. We feel like the current layout provides a better transition between the residential and non-residential uses as you move from north to south throughout the project. We also feel that Lot C is best used for a smaller, more nimble building and development. Lastly, and most importantly, the project team spent the last five years working to provide better buffers and better separation between our proposed residential use and the existing industrial property to the north. By swapping these two uses, it would move the elderly housing development about 300 feet closer to the abutting property line, and due to the topography, would result in a four-story residential building that would overlook the former Nashua property along the railroad. So, Mr. Chair, in summary, we feel it's best to move forward with the current layout as shown on the CUP plan.
Thank you for picking up that detail and following up on the suggestions we made in this response.
So the first application before you tonight is the proposed consolidation and subdivision plan. As I mentioned, the subject parcels are located along Daniel Webster Highway. There's six existing lots that comprise the Edgebrook site, Tax Maps 1E Lots 4-1 and 4-2, Tax Map 2E Lots 6-2, 7, 8, and 9. They're currently undeveloped and total 36 acres, located in the I-1 Industrial Zone and the Aquifer Protection Overlay District here in town. The purpose of the application, as I mentioned, is to create new development lots in accordance with the recently approved CUP plan. It is proposed to consolidate four existing lots, 1E 4-1, 1E 4-2, 2E 7, 2E 8, and subdivide them into three new lots, 1E 4-1, 1E 4-2, and 2E 7. Lot 4-1 is about 26 and 1/2 acres and is subject to the subsequent site plan application. Lots 1E 4-2 and lots 1E-7 are both about two acres and are future development lots. Existing Tax Map 2E Lots 6-2 and 9 will remain as they currently exist. That's the northernmost parcel and the small half-acre site on the other side of the railroad track. Our proposed application is a land plan only and does not propose any physical improvements to the property. So next case before you tonight, Mr. Chair, is the site plan. It's a 200...
If I could ask, but...
Sure.
I have a bunch of pictures showing your proposal, and I don't have anything showing the existing, and yet you keep talking about it, an eight. Where is Lot 8?
The existing Lot 8, it's not shown on this master subdivision plan.
I can tell that.
It's within the package. It tends to lie on the lower portions of the site along the river.
Which side of the railroad is it on?
Pardon?
It's the western side.
Nine is on the far side of the river.
Nine is on the far side of the river.
I just found that when you mentioned it, but I still don't understand where eight was, is, could have been. You don't, you didn't include that in your package at all. You want to consolidate it, but you didn't tell me where it was. Silly me.
So I've only got the master subdivision plan here. Those existing lots are shown in detail on the, this is a five sheet set on 2, 3, 4, and 5, but in general, the existing Lot 8 lies along the lower portions of the site.
I have 2, 3, 4, but I see Lot 8.
Yeah, I don't, I mean, all I see is proposals.
It's not shown on our plans.
There is, Mr. Chairman, if you look at page 3 of 5, there is something that says Old Lot 2E-8. I can see it. Can I just show you, Mr. Chairman? If you look there, if you read...
Oh, this one here?
Oh, okay.
There you are, Tom.
I see. Are you on page 3?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's here.
But it says that. I see an old lot. Where's the lines for it? I'm curious.
So I have a reduced plan set here where I can see it on sheet 2.
I can see it on sheet 3.
So I see, I saw on sheet 3 where it says Old Lot 2E-8, but I don't know where the boundaries are.
I got my own microphone off. I don't know where the boundaries of the old lots are.
Well, here is Old Lot 2 also.
They're shown on sheets 2 and 3.
What's?
So if you look at sheet 2, and towards the lower right-hand portion of the plan, it says proposed 1E 4-1.
Yes.
26.5 acres. Just to the top left of that, it says Old Lot 2E 8.
I see where it says that. What are the boundaries of the old lot?
And then just to the left of there, there's a dash line that says Old Lot.
Typical.
Mr. Chair?
If I could ask, we have the GIS in their packet, if that would help show the full extent of the boundary, do you think?
They're not labeled, but...
It would.
Yeah, we did.
So if you guys want to flip to that aerial map in your packets?
Mm-hmm. Got it.
It's the northeasternmost lot along the railroad tracks, and there's a small finger of it that extends back up towards Daniel Webster Highway near the existing signalized intersection at Harris Pond and Daniel Webster Highway.
You're saying that's the section between the yellow and the blue lines?
Correct.
Thank you.
Oh.
That's tricky.
Thank you, Robert.
Thank you, Robert, for that. I think separately, as a planning board, we ought to consider, including in our regulations when someone's doing lot line adjustments or consolidation plans, that we have one single plan showing what exists today, and just that.
I thought we normally got that, so...
Sometimes we do, but, well, we've gotten some subdivision and site plan, subdivision proposals in the past where both of them are overlaid on the same drawing, and you're trying to figure out what the dark line means and the light line means, and we've fought our way through that, but it's never been as difficult as this to figure out where the old lots are on this.
Yeah, we go back and forth with that all the time, in terms of, a lot of times, we like to show the final product on the master plan, since that's typically the one that gets recorded.
Okay, here's that.
I agree that there ought to be, within the set, the after, but I think that there ought to be the before, too.
The board could, as a condition of approval, request adding such a sheet to the site.
Yeah, we'd be happy to add the existing lot lines and label them on the master subdivision plan. That would be no problem.
I appreciate that, and I think that will ultimately help in this particular instance. It doesn't really help us if we want to see that at the time we're having a hearing, though. It's, could get it later. Is that it?
When is the sub...
For the record, Brad Westgate, Weiner Bennett Lawyer, for the applicant, this is one of the prior subdivision plans that shows not all of the old lots, but it shows Lot 8, for example, and it's that same configuration that the GIS depicted.
Okay. So that was in a previous package? Okay, I mean, it...
It was approved years ago by this board and various reconfigurations of this whole set of properties.
Right. Tom, are you able to, with the plans that you've got on your easel, just to walk us through the location of the existing lots on one or more plans? No.
No, I don't think so with the oversized plan set, to be honest. I can walk you through, based on this aerial map in your packet?
Okay. Walk me through the aerial.
We're happy to walk you through based on the plan, the plans itself, because, as I mentioned, it's divided up between sheets 2 and 3, so...
Well, so on my aerial, I've got four yellow lots and a blue one, and we've decided that the top yellow one, the northernmost yellow one, is 8, Lot 8.
Yep.
What else we got?
So that is 2E... Brad, I need that. 2E 8? 2E 8 is the northeasternmost lot. The northwesternmost lot, the blue lot, as shown on that aerial map, is 2E 6-2.
Is that...
2E 6-2.
Is that 2E 7 or...
2E 6-2. Is the blue?
Where's Old Lot?
2E 7.
You should have it.
Right there? No, no, the Opecia, that's up here. I'm sorry. 2E 6-2 is located just north of that blue lot. It's not highlighted on your plan.
It's not outlined.
Correct.
Okay.
It's not, that lot and the lot across from the railroad track, Lot 9, are not part of the consolidation subdivision. They're shown on our plans to show the boundary and easement information, since they're part of the overall Edgebrook site, but they're not specifically part of the consolidation subdivision plan action.
Okay, so the existing 6.2 and existing 9 are both staying in their current configuration. They happen to be shown, you've pointed them out to us, but nothing's changing with respect to their boundaries. All right?
Correct.
Okay, go through the rest of what's on the aerial.
Okay.
What's the blue one?
So the blue lot is Map 2E Lot 7.
Okay.
Oh.
Sorry. The blue lot is now E-7.
Yes.
Yep.
Okay. Now, the one south of the blue lot?
Is going to be 1E 4-2.
Okay, and the one south of that?
Which is the old 1E 4-1.
You think it's 4-1?
That's what I think.
You're probably right.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, okay. Mr. Chair, maybe easier if Attorney Westgate just highlighted those lots quickly on the plans and...
Sure. Sure, sure. I don't mean to sort of overring kind of what we've got going on, because I get what you're trying to do with the consolidation, but on some level, we do need to understand which parcels on the map are actually part of this.
Sure, sure. So as my presentation outlined, and I'm unable to depict for you visually right now, is that the site consists right now of six lots. So you've got 2E 6-2, which is the northernmost lot, and it doesn't show up on this aerial map as highlighted, because it's not part of the subdivision consolidation plan. There's also a small half-acre lot located on the other side of the railroad that's also not highlighted on this plan. The remaining site is comprised of four lots, and those four lots are going to be consolidated and then re-subdivided into three lots.
Is there leftover land, some that...
There's not.
Because the boundaries look different, but...
It's just reconfiguring those internal lot lines between those four lots.
And the four lots are all west of the railroad.
Correct.
Completely.
Correct.
Okay, I think I see them. It's these two...
You've got five lots that are getting reconfigured.
There's five lots, yeah.
And two that are not.
6, 2, and 9. Put the blue one and the four yellow.
We're consolidating lots, existing lots, 1E 4-1, 1E 4-2, 2E 7, and 2E 8.
So what's happening with 1E 4? Nothing?
1E 4-1?
No, 1E 4.
I don't believe there's an existing 1E 4.
The southernmost lot on this picture is which lot?
Yeah, I think, I think the problem is there's an extra lot that's highlighted on here, and I think Attorney Westgate is going to let me know that in a second.
Okay, thank you.
So if I can go through this map again with you folks, the blue lot is 2E 7, Lot 7, Map 2E. Just to the south of that is Map 1E Lot 4-2, and just to the south of that is Map 1E Lot 4-1. And again, the lot along the railroad tracks is Map 2E Lot 8. The southernmost lot, as highlighted on this plan, I don't believe is part of our project.
Yeah, it looks like it's not. What's the, what, there's one lot left over?
That's the state-owned DOT land.
There's a lot left over. I found 2E 7, 1E 4-2, 1E 4-1, and what's the other one?
The southernmost lot is not part of our property.
Understood.
It's listed on page 3 as Map 1E Lot 4.
But that also clarifies that it's a DOT property, so that's not part of the project.
It's an abutting parcel to the south.
Yeah, it shouldn't have shown up as highlighted on this aerial.
Right.
Yeah, so that's DOT now.
There's still a piece missing. Consolidating to four, maybe five, if you're comparing across. 1, 2, 3, 4, this is the, oh, it'd be consolidated into one and then re, then redone into these four.
Okay, thank you.
Or five.
All right, Attorney Westgate, you ready for us?
Sheet 1 says it's...
No?
Yes.
Engineer?
Okay.
The hard part of this, Mr. Chairman, is that the existing lots were reconfigured themselves years ago in a sequence of plans. So, in other words, there was a subdivision made many years ago that depicted these parcels, including land that became part of the DOT purchase. Then there were internal reconfigurations and lot line adjustments made of these very lots before anything happens this evening. So, there's no one existing subdivision plan of record that shows everything. You have to piece that together, if you follow my sequence here. So what I've tried to do, as best as possible, is take Sheets 2 and 3 in the plan set, and using the fainter dashed lines and then the faint old lot designations that you see on Sheets 2 and 3, and try to highlight them to show you what I believe is the present configuration of lots before this lot line and consolidation plan would be processed.
Okay. So do you want to point those out or pass those around? How do you want to do this?
It may not be all that efficient. I may have Tom come with me with that at the same time. I would literally have to come up to you and sort of show you this.
Folks at home kind of lose the effect when we do that.
Sure.
Are those the same plans that we have here? They're just got some highlights on them?
Yeah, they're your Sheets 2 and 3 in your packets.
Can you put them up on your easel and kind of walk us through them?
Maybe if I hold these, Tom, he can probably walk you through on the master sheet.
Sure.
He'd have some help. But anyway, I know that folks don't lose it, but that's what you're looking at, is a bunch of lots that are configured essentially, as I've highlighted in yellow. That's what you have, and that's what Sheets 2 and 3 are attempting to show you by the dashed lines.
So...
Sheets 2 and 3, yeah.
Just to get you guys oriented again, there's six existing lots that are out there right now. So, Lot, map 2E6-2 is this lot to the north here. It is not changing, nor is it actually part of this subdivision consolidation plan application. We have it on the plan because it's part of the Edgebrook site. We wanted to show the boundary and easement information for that lot.
Got it.
That's the first lot. The second lot I want to mention is across the railroad, so that's 2E9. It's an existing lot, again, not part of the consolidation subdivision.
By May, that lot, I think, never, didn't have a tax map and lot number for a long time, and now it's being attributed to E9 as its new number. I believe, Robert, that's correct.
Okay.
So the remaining existing four parcels are located here in the central portion of the site, and we're reworking the existing internal lot lines of those four lots to create these three lots, as you see here. So, Brad, if you want to show the...
The harder part is showing the layout of the existing ones, but just to get some basic sense, if you can move that a little further, Tom. So, existing 2E7, which I think you'll see on Sheet 2 or 3, is called Old Lot 2E7. It's this here, sort of a wedge, and it fits in, if you will. It fits in, yeah, you've got to spin it 90 degrees, Tom, the other way, sorry. There you go. That wedge essentially fits in, yep, like this into here. Then there's the one that has the flagpole, if you will, out to Daniel Webster, 2E8, is basically the flagpole like this, and then it breaks out into substantial acreage that's left in the back. And then, yes, 4-2 is essentially in the frontage area on DW Highway, and 4-1 is the balance of frontage, then spinning off to the river. As I said, you literally need about four different recorded plans presently on record to piece together to show all that. I'm sorry, that was a level of detail.
Does this make sense now that we know that that's DOT and not part of what we're talking about?
Clear as mud.
Yeah, that's a big difference.
Clear as mud. So, I've sort of mentioned it earlier, but if we hadn't sort of made it clear, when we get to signing plans, let's have a page that just shows what exists today.
That can be readily done, because we just take the existing recorded plans, essentially depict all of it into one sheet, and it'll be very simple to do. You'll then still have to just compare the two to see the old to the new.
Do you want an existing plan, or do you want the existing lot lines added to this sheet here to compare the two?
I would like, me personally, I would like one plan showing everything that's part of Edgebrook with the existing lot lines on it, and then Page 2, one sheet with all of the new lot lines after the subdivision and consolidation.
Neither would be recorded components of the package, but they'd be very clear to you what was before and what was after.
Yeah, we would at least have them on file in our office.
Right.
I don't know why you couldn't record them if you chose to, at least the after one. The before one, it doesn't necessarily have to be recorded, but...
The after one would get recorded as part of the master package, which has the sub-sheets. Because of the size of the parcel, you can't easily put everything on a large enough scale on just one big sheet of paper. That's why Tom has the cover sheet and then the subsidiary sheets for the new pieces.
So, explain that one to me before, because every time that we've seen your parcel before, we've gotten the entire thing on one piece of paper. And now, I know that we're breaking them up, because there's a lot of, a little detail to show with where the lot lines are, but so far, with the CUP and all of this, we've had no trouble getting the whole thing on a piece of paper.
Again, as Brad said, we're doing it for clarity's sake, because we're providing you the final picture, which is the master plan, which, now looking at it, it should have the existing lot lines on it to tell the story. That's the point of the master plan. But for the detailed subdivision plans, with all the easements and topography and details that go into it, we enlarge that scale into a 60-scale plan, a 260-scale plan. Just like the site plan, we went to 40-scale for the whole property, because it's just merely, it's too much going on, too.
I understand what you're saying. This actually does, is the after version, because that's what you want it to be when it's done. So, yeah, that part's already done.
Correct. But you just can't put on that all the meets and bounds, easement locations and everything. It just gets too, it gets too busy at that scale. That's why Tom mentioned, to break it down into sub-plans with larger scale for recording.
One way or another, I think I have my bearings on what the existing lots are, or at least I've had enough explanation to look forward to receiving it in a future plan and drawing. Are there other discussion items on the subdivision piece of the proposal? Okay, now, you wanted to continue into the presentation of the site plan.
That's okay with you?
It is.
Okay. So, the site plan before you tonight is a 232-unit multifamily residential project to be known as Residences at Edgebrook. It includes a clubhouse, building, a dog park, private streets, parking, and associated site improvements. In the past, I've given a detailed breakdown of the site in terms of the existing features and topography. If there are questions there, I'd be happy to dive back in, but I'd like to just talk about the major components of the proposed project. So the first portion of the project is Benning Court, which is a 400-foot entrance drive located off the signalized intersection at DW Highway and Harris Pond Drive, one lane in, two lanes out, with a boulevard and cul-de-sac at the end to provide traffic calming. We think this provides a sense of arrival for the project. It's to be a private street, as requested by the Public Works Department, and to be under common ownership by the future lot owners, who will share maintenance. Utility infrastructure will be located within Benning Court for the residential project and for the future non-residential lots. Pioneer Way is an 1,800 linear foot private street, providing access to the project. It emanates at Benning Court cul-de-sac, and then flows in a southerly and then easterly direction, looping around to navigate the topography, as a cul-de-sac provided at the end for emergency vehicle and school bus turnarounds. Building 1 is an age-restricted elderly multifamily residential building, four stories, 76 units. There are 36 one-bedroom units and 40 two-bedroom units, so a good balance, with a total of 116 parking spaces. We have about 72 surface spots and 44 in the garage. Access is via both Pioneer Way and Benning Court. As we move down the hill, access to the elderly housing building is provided with a site driveway both off of Benning Court, about halfway down, and also off of Pioneer Way is the access to the garage portion of that.
Okay, but there's no connection between those two?
There's not, no.
Access points?
Correct, yeah.
And there's...
The garage sits on the lower level off of Pioneer, so there's a little bit of topography change there and a little bit of green space to break up those two. So if you're accessing the garage, you'd have to enter off of Pioneer Way.
Is the garage just under one half of that building, or does it go over there?
It's under the entire building.
It's under the entire building. So it turns a 90-degree turn under the building?
Correct.
People have to back out and come back out the way they went in?
Yep, yep. Yeah, there's 44 spaces off of, in that garage. This garage located under all four of these multifamily buildings, garage-level parking.
With only one access?
Correct. Correct. Buildings 2, 3, and 4, multifamily market rate buildings, four-story, 52 units, 156 units total, there's 61 bedroom units and 96 two-bedroom units. A total of 287 parking spaces provided for these three buildings, which is about 1.8 spaces per unit. 209 surface spaces and 78 spaces in the garages, 26 per building. As I mentioned, there's 100, an 1,800 linear foot private street to be known as Pioneer Way that provides access to the site. Other amenities included in the site plan, there's a clubhouse building, an outdoor patio area centrally located between Buildings 1 and 2. There's a fenced dog park located at the end of Pioneer Way, near the cul-de-sac, in the northeast corner of the property. There's also a fair number of sidewalks and pedestrian connectivity, both throughout the project and also across Daniel Webster Highway at the signalized intersection. A couple key elements of the site plan that I'd like to talk about tonight. The first is parking. So the plan is compliant with the minimum spaces required by code for the elderly housing building, which is Building 1. Buildings 2, 3, and 4, the multifamily market rate buildings, provide 287 spaces, which, as I mentioned, is about 1.8 spaces per unit, where 393 spaces are required by code, which is about 2.5 spaces per unit. This issue was studied extensively during the 2014 CUP approval process, including evaluating other multifamily developments in town. We feel like 1.75 spaces per unit is more in keeping with a project like this and would certainly meet our clients' needs. If needed, we would construct about 100-space parking lot where the dog park is now, in order to meet the town's code. So we would have land there, if needed, in the future. Of course, less parking creates more open space and less runoff. So we're seeking from the board tonight feedback on whether or not a formal site plan waiver request is needed. However, as noted in the staff report, the board may feel that this waiver is unnecessary based on the approval of this parking number as part of the conditional use permit. Next, I'd like to talk about emergency access. Primary access provided via the new private streets, as I mentioned, all buildings to be sprinkler. Access to three sides of the multifamily buildings are provided via fire lanes. We have met with the fire marshal to review the current plan, and I won't put words in his mouth, but I believe he is comfortable with the access as shown on the plan.
He left.
We did.
No, he moved.
He moved. One comment that he did pass along is that our plans as currently shown, show a reinforced turf fire lane, grass, around the multifamily buildings, and that will not be acceptable to the fire department. They have concerns about how that reinforced turf paver will hold up under winter maintenance activities, so we're going to be working with the fire department to explore other options, including gravel and pavement, maybe a combination of both. But regardless, we will be providing the fire lanes as shown on the plan. Traffic. The 2014 study analysis was updated by Steve Purnow. He gave the board a detailed review of his traffic study findings as part of the CUP meeting back in November. As he mentioned, a scoping meeting was held with DOT and the town stakeholders back in August of 2018. The study included detailed counts at DW Highway and the Harris Pond Drive intersection. We evaluated the traffic to be generated from the Edgebrook project. The conclusion was that the current three-way intersection needs to be amended to make it four-way. This will require an off-site roadway, signal, and pedestrian improvement. The intersection is currently operating well below capacity and at full buildout is still expected to operate at level of service. B.
Which letter? Which letter, apology?
B.
B, thank you.
B is in boy. Baby boy. The study was reviewed by the town's peer review consultants. Overall, they only had a couple minor comments to report back to us. The off-site signal roadway improvement plan is in progress and is due to be submitted to DOT, along with our plans for their review in the near future. A DOT driveway permit is required as part of this project. Utilities. New utilities will be located in Benning Court and Pioneer Way to service the residential portion of the project, as well as the future lots. It's worth noting that a new sewer connection will be made across Daniel Webster Highway in the northerly portion of the site. This will, sewer to the site will be provided via a mix of gravity flow for the upper portions of the site and a private pump station in the lower portions of the site. Both will all tie back into this new sewer main across from Daniel Webster Highway. New water, gas, underground electric, tell data will all be provided as part of the project. Lastly, stormwater. Again, it was touched upon in the CUP application. We always talk about quality and quantity. There are very favorable soil conditions for recharge throughout the site, so our goal is to break up the drainage areas and break up the development areas into smaller treatment practices and use rain gardens wherever we can to promote recharge throughout the site. There are some large grassed infiltration basins located in the lower portions of the site to handle water and large storm events before controlled discharge is made to the Penachuk Brook. The design, of course, will meet the Town of Merrimack and New Hampshire DES stormwater regulations. At this time, Mr. Chair, I'd like to turn things over to Adam from Market Square Architects to briefly talk about the architectural design for the project.
Thank you, Tom. Welcome, Adam.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Adam Wagner, Market Square Architects, Portsmouth, New Hampshire. I have here with me tonight a couple different perspectives that we've done of the project. We have done building elevations of all sides of the buildings, but I find that the perspectives are the best way to really illustrate what we're proposing to build on the site.
Agreed.
As mentioned already, each of the residential buildings proposed is a four-story wood-framed building over a parking podium. We're going to do our best to disguise that parking podium where we can, so it blends with the rest of the building. And because the grading of the site, as it varies with each of the individual buildings, the point of entry is going to vary as well. This particular rendering is of the age-restricted building. And the next one I have here is of the non-age-restricted buildings. Again, as you can see, four stories, parking podium below. General aesthetics of the building. We have designed these to, to an aesthetic that caters to young professionals, empty nesters, a little bit more of a modern aesthetic, which we find to be appropriate for this site, given its location. As you can see, we've broken up the buildings with various materials, locating heavier materials, such as a masonry base on the lower portion, and then as you move up... materials such as a masonry base on the lower portion, and then as you move up in the building, lighter materials such as fiber cement siding, perhaps some rib panels as we have shown here. All of the windows proposed are punched openings, very traditional in residential architecture. You'll also notice the buildings have been designed with flat roofs. Because of the way mechanical systems are often set up for multifamily buildings, each unit would have its own condenser, and as opposed to scattering those around the site, those would be located on the roof, which provides less clutter at ground level. The last rendering I have here is of the clubhouse building, which, given the size and scale of this building, we felt that a pitched roof was much more appropriate, much more residential in scale and feel, and that's why we have taken that approach. I would be more than willing to answer any questions that you have, but don't want to take up too much of your time with the aesthetics of the building, so...
Thank you for the presentation and for bringing the perspectives. I think they do help more than the elevations. So can you put one up that shows the apartment buildings? Yeah, that one. I imagine it applies to the senior housing as well. So you're going to have your air conditioning and your mechanicals on the roof?
That is correct.
Tell me about screening them or how they'd be arranged so that they're not visible, especially for those apartment buildings that are way down the hill from the upper portions of the site?
So as you'll notice, the roof line here is not a straight line. We have tried to break that up as much as possible, so in some portions, there is a parapet that continues up past the roof line. The roof that sits behind this is flat all the way across. The reason why we do that is to create that screening for those mechanical units. The condensers for these residential units are quite small. They're maybe three feet by three feet by three feet. And they're typically clustered on the center of the roof somewhere so that you'd have to be a long way away in order to have the possibility of catching a glimpse of them that way.
Well, you've got 30 or 40 feet of height if you're up by the elderly housing.
With the building grade, yes. So in those situations, we'll be looking at what we can do to screen them if we need to do anything in addition to the parapets that are already shown here.
Thank you for that explanation. Are you screening the utilities on the senior housing as well?
Yes, it would be the same for both.
Same way. That one's up on the hill, so it's much easier to understand that you wouldn't necessarily see the top of the four-story building.
But these will not have big base building HVAC rooftop systems, you know, the ones that are eight feet by 20 feet long and 10 feet tall. These are just condensers for the air conditioning system.
Understood. Thank you for that.
Right, but you have 50 of them.
Correct.
Fifty of them.
It's one per unit plus several for the common areas, but they sit no higher than this table, so from a perspective standpoint, if those are located back in the middle of this building, it makes it very difficult to see.
Are there any other mechanicals other than air handling?
No.
On the roof?
No, not on the roof.
What about dumpsters and trash and stuff?
I'm going to defer to Civil on that.
Before he goes, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, before we let Adam get away, before we switch back?
Yeah. Okay. The parking area, you referred to it as a, what did you call it?
A podium.
Podium?
Yes.
Could you explain to me what a podium parking lot is?
Sure. I think it's probably best to describe in this plan. So as you can see here, this level is the parking level, and these four levels above are the living areas. So the way this building is constructed is this open level is created and then a podium is put in place to create whatever fire separation is required between the vehicular parking and the residential units. And then the wood-framed building is built on top of that.
What is the podium? I just don't know.
It's just a term for the separation between that parking level and the residential level. Basically, you're creating an elevated deck. Instead of building these units slab-on-grade, you're elevating them one story in the air.
Is it concrete, or is it, what's it made of?
It will have some steel in it. We haven't gone through all of the construction detailing on this. I've done numerous podiums in my career. Sometimes they're steel and concrete, sometimes they're steel and wood in a hybrid situation. It depends on the project.
What kind of fire protection do you need between a parking garage and the apartment?
So in this construction type, which would be type five construction, you need a one-hour separation between your parking level and your residential above, and that's in a fully sprinkled building.
Okay. Nelson, do you have other questions about that?
Okay.
I think I understand what it means to...
I have a question. On the other perspective drawing for the clubhouse, in Tom's presentation, he indicated that there's sidewalks throughout, but in that picture, I don't see any sidewalks. People are walking down the middle, what looks like the middle of the street.
So they may not have been incorporated into this rendering, but if they're shown on Civil, then that's what it will be built to.
Okay. Looking at the first plan, too, looking at the proposed clubhouse, I don't see any indication of sidewalks there. How do you, do you just drive up to the clubhouse or walk down the middle of the road to get to it?
Yeah, there's no sidewalk connection there as shown on the plan. You're right, between Pioneer Way, the end of the driveway and up to the end, we do have sidewalks up at the parking area.
So if people wanted to go ahead and utilize that, they'd have to either walk down the street or drive to it?
Fairly low-volume driveway there. Be happy to add a sidewalk there if you feel strongly about that.
Yeah, probably should.
I think so. I think it'd be a good idea to have access to it, you know, pedestrian access to the clubhouse.
Is there any intention to have interconnects between the buildings and the clubhouse without having to go out to the street and around, or...
There's quite a bit of topography change between each of these development pads. They're kind of terraced as we move down the hill, so it's one thing that we had considered. But as you can imagine, it would likely involve stairs and, you know, maybe some ramps. So at the present time, we're sticking with what we have here, which is sidewalk connections out to the road and providing access that way.
You talked at the beginning about not wanting to move the elderly because you wanted to keep things integrated and together, but they're not integrated and together because you have to go to the road to go to anything, and you're telling me that the topography makes it so that you can't be integrated. So what's it going to be, integrated or not?
We feel like this plan is pretty well-integrated between the uses.
So the...
I'm not hearing that, but okay.
So, correct, the Building one is now going to be the elderly housing?
Building one is the elderly housing, correct.
So as I understand it now, I think that walking is a leisure activity of a lot of elderly people, and if there's no sidewalks, going to the clubhouse, which is located pretty close, it doesn't seem really like a great idea to not have any sidewalks, especially from that, you know, the building, Building one to the clubhouse at least.
Agree.
So I'm looking at sheet five, and it looks like there's 16 feet of elevation change immediately off the back of the elderly housing that you'd have to try to navigate with your sidewalk?
Correct, yeah. We would have to navigate that slope. Not saying it can't be done, certainly we can, if that's the will of the board, if you feel strongly about that, we'll go back and look at how we can make a connection there between those two buildings.
I'm in favor of seeing the sidewalk along the edge of the driveway to the clubhouse, from Pioneer Way to the clubhouse, the one we talked initially in answer to Neil's question. If there's a way to do some of that interconnection and integration, I think it does help the site, but I do also understand the challenges of, especially if the intended user of the sidewalk is the elderly housing, that it's got to be a modest slope and reasonable for them to navigate on. That could be difficult right off the back of the elderly housing.
It can be done without a lot of expense, I think.
Happy to consider it, absolutely.
Thank you.
And then I think on the other side of the clubhouse, in the other direction, there's one of the residential units that's not necessarily, well, yeah, certainly could be some interconnection on the south side of the clubhouse to Building two.
From the patio angled down or something, you know?
Yeah, that one would likely be a set of stairs.
Well, it doesn't have to go straight down the hill. It could go at an angle down the hill, right? Maybe?
It would be a long way to go on an angle. But we can look at it, absolutely.
So that's 156 to 172, yeah.
Mr. Chair, I think there was a question about dumpsters.
Yes, please. Where are those going to be located?
Dumpster locations, dumpster enclosures located throughout the site that are shown on the plan. There's one at Building one within the parking area, one at the clubhouse, one at Building two, and then a combination one at Buildings three and four, located where the garage entrances are. So those would be privately serviced. I just asked Bob from SMC, and he said one to two times a week, depending on their use.
Are those shown on one of the plans that we have?
Shown on page one anyway.
Yeah, the master plan, they're shown. You'd be able to see them better on the site plan sheets, but if you look at the master site plan...
In the little boxes with gates on them?
Yep. Standard concrete dumpster enclosure.
So I'm looking at sheet one as you directed me, and so show me where the dumpster is on Building one?
So right where the parking count 72 is, just to the right of that, at the end of that drive aisle, is a little box.
Little sidewalk going to it?
I got you. All right.
And at the clubhouse at the end, again, by the 15-space count, just at the end of that aisle, similar on Building two, at the end of that drive aisle near the fire lane. And then between Buildings three and four, again, where the garage entrance is, so between the two buildings, there's that driveway. That's where the garage entrance will be at the lower levels. There's a dumpster enclosure there.
People are expected to walk out to those to dump their trash, or...
Correct.
Because Buildings three and four are at least on the level of the garage, and you can walk to them from the garage area, I guess. The other ones, you have to come out and go down a floor? Is there an exit from the garage on the side of the building, or just...
There is, yeah. There's a man door there next to the overhead garage door for the cars.
The overhead garage door is at the end of the building, though, and the dumpsters all the way at the other end for Number Two.
Oh, Number Two, yes, and they would come out the exterior man door on the first floor level.
On the garage floor level.
The first floor level for Building two, so these...
So they have to come down a floor?
All the buildings are terraced to fit into the slope, so for Building two, they would leave, the parking lot is at the first floor level?
Oh, it is?
Yeah.
It doesn't show that in this perspective, and I can't tell that from looking at this, so I'm...
Correct.
...lost.
But there are dumpsters at each location.
Okay. Thank you for going through that. Neil?
So it looks like the other, it looks like Building one to, it looks like it has some continuity where how they would enter and get to those dumpsters and pull out, but the clubhouse, it looks like they would have to pull in and then back out of that parking area, back up the road, back up the drive, and then wanted to get out?
The trash truck, you mean?
Yeah, the trash truck.
Yeah, so it's likely there that they would have to, I can imagine the clubhouse building is going to empty their trash a little less than the rest of the buildings. They may have to come at off-hours to do that. I wouldn't want to provide a big hammerhead turnaround there for such a small application as that, so they would likely need to utilize one of the parking spaces, or like you said, back down the driveway.
Right. And can you show me where the, or can you tell me where on Building four and three the dumpsters are? I'm having a hard time seeing those.
Just between the two buildings?
Right in the middle.
There's a little box there off of the site driveway?
Okay, see it now. Thank you.
So those are double the size of the other ones, so likely be, you know, two full dumpsters there for those two buildings.
Okay.
Neil, were you thinking for Building two that they would empty the trash and then go on around the proposed fire lane, or...
Well, it looks like that would be the option, because otherwise they would have to back all the way up that parking area and back out onto Pioneer Way. But also, I was, my concern was the clubhouse where there is no secondary entrance or exit.
I get it. I'm just wondering if that proposed fire lane would be accessible to somebody 24/7.
Is that a gated?
Yeah, we weren't proposing to gate it.
You're not proposing?
Correct.
Okay. But if it was reinforced grass, you wouldn't be expecting people to be driving on it normally?
No, but we know it's not going to be reinforced.
It's not going to change, but according to them, it's no difference, you know?
Okay.
I'm, very minor comment. I was interested to see the performance of some of the reinforced grass situation, to see how that worked. It's been proposed in some other things, and it didn't kind of fit into the final plan of another one as well, so I get that the fire department kind of understands how they work or whether they would work, but as a board member, I was kind of curious to see one actually get built and see how it works. John? Please do.
Tom and I have worked multiple times on the proposal, and I've asked him to provide some data on basically the longevity and the strength of these pavers and various other systems that they have. I've been unable to find anything that actually indicates how well they work in New England or northern climates. They work very well in Southern California, Florida, Texas. The issue we have up here is frost heaves, the concrete actually breaking due to freeze-thaw cycle, and also the slope. I've talked to other fire marshals in various towns around us, and pretty much every one of them has said the same thing. We don't allow them because there's just no data saying that they will last.
I think the frost heaves is a well-made point, because if you, the whole point of frost heaves is you can't let the water infiltrate through the cracks because that's what we'll give them to you.
Right, and that's the whole principle behind them, is that water infiltrates down into them, and considering how, you know, how deep the frost gets in New England, we're just concerned they're not going to last over a period of time. And again, none of the data I've seen has been able to prove otherwise to that, so at this point, we're not willing to risk having them be used. At this point, we don't want to basically be data-testing a product that may fail and dump our, you know, three-quarters of a million-dollar adder truck on its side.
Understood, and that's obviously why your expertise is so valuable to what we're doing. I was just curious to see what actually, for the same reason. I mean, I don't have the ability to do the research and look for the data, but I wanted to see one actually in practice, just to see what happens, and to see if they were going to be a reliable product. I guess we'll have to wait and see whether the manufacturers come up with some answers for those things. Okay? Thank you for that. Thank you. I don't want to necessarily cut off discussion on the general items, but it is probably a point where we've received enough information to decide to accept these applications as complete, if that is the will of the board.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we accept both these applications as complete and that we can make decisions on them, subject to further information in the notes we've had from staff.
It's a motion to accept the applications as complete for both the subdivision and the site plan. Is there a second? Second by Nelson. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Thank you for that. So it's 6-0-0 to accept both applications as complete. There's no waivers related to the subdivision and consolidation. The only note that we've discussed is trying to get a good existing conditions plan that shows the existing boundaries. Did any member of the board have other questions specifically related to the consolidation and subdivision plan?
Oh, not that one. The other one, the site plan.
Okay. I know that we are treating them both together. Are there any butters or citizens who wish to weigh in on this consolidation and subdivision plan? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing as to that portion of the project. Is the board prepared to take final action on the subdivision and the consolidation and subdivision plan?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion for that we accept this, the site, the consolidation plan as complete, subject, of course, to the memo from Kelly Schimmel dated January the 3rd, 2019, with any additional comments that have occurred during the course of this meeting.
You said that we should accept it as complete. Did you mean to indicate that we would grant conditional final approval?
Sorry, I would grant conditional final approval for the plans, subject to that and, of course, the request that you have made for clarification by providing the old lots on a plan that we can understand.
Is there a second for Aleister's motion?
I'll second that, yes. I wanted to be sure. I'll second that, yes. I wanted to be sure we got in what he tacked on at the end, and that is that we're going to get a plan that shows the as-is condition of the boundaries of these properties.
Excellent. Any further discussion on the consolidation subdivision plan? If none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? So that's 6-0-0 to grant conditional final approval to that item on our agenda. With respect to the site plan, let me, let's resume discussion wherever the board would like to take it, and then open it up for some public hearing.
I did have a question in regards to the parking.
Okay.
If they, if it's the will of the board to ask for more parking, you indicated that it would be put in over by the dog park. Would that be in place of the dog park?
Yes.
Likely the dog park, because we're about 100 spaces short, so we can squeeze in 10, 20 spaces throughout the site, but to make up 100 spaces, we would likely need a large parking field, so either the dog park would be downsized considerably, or would be eliminated altogether in order to accommodate that extra 100 spaces that we don't feel like we need.
Right, okay.
So I just want to clarify the situation with parking, because I think the board has several choices to consider that are options before us. One is that the board could regard our approval of the conditional use permit showing the level of parking that exists on the site to be an acceptance of that level of parking. Option two would be to consider whether the conditional use permit didn't accomplish that approval, but we want to waive the parking requirement to allow them to build what's shown. And a third option is, we don't accept this level of parking. We want them to build the 100 that they're short, and that could be done where the dog park is, or some other direction that the board gives. Or we could waive some of the 100 and require some of the 100 to be built. So it's kind of four different avenues to do that. My personal belief, as I sat and listened to the CUP, was that when I voted on it, I was accepting what was shown on the plan in terms of parking, and that I was satisfied with it. But everybody has their own way, ability to approach what they thought they considered and voted on, and if you want to take up sort of parking as a part of this site plan, and consider whether to waive it or require it, I have no objection to that either. Nelson?
Mr. Chairman, my preference would be to approve the parking waiver with this site plan. Is to attach that part of the waiver to this plan, given that other pieces are going to come together here, and I would be expecting them perhaps to meet the requirements of their particular sites. And if something changed here later, and for some reason they wanted more or less, this is the baseline from which to work, rather than working from the overall site. That's my thinking out loud.
Makes sense. Other comments or questions on parking?
Well, I think I'm agreeing with Nelson, but I wasn't 100% sure I followed you. I apologize for that. But basically asking that we, that they do request a waiver, that we could vote on and accept it to be part of this plan, so that it's not considered an integral part of the CUP, that the parking wasn't necessary.
I think that that's what Nelson suggested, and I have no objection to that.
I'm good, thank you.
As an approach. I think as a general matter, we can, and I know we may ultimately decide we want to continue the proceedings after tonight to address some of the things that are interim. It may be helpful to provide this applicant with some feedback about whether we would be amenable to a waiver, or want to see the parking spaces built, and if they were built, likely where the dog park is shown. That doesn't necessarily require a vote at this point on that waiver, because we should probably hear a formal submission of a waiver request before we vote on one. But would the board be willing, as a part of the discussion, to give the applicant an indication of favorable or unfavorable on a parking waiver of the scope laid out here?
Mr. Chairman, I would be favorable with a waiver on the understanding that they have evaluated other similar places and deem this to be appropriate. Also to avoid more impervious surface, and also with the understanding that they have space, they could dedicate to parking if it turned out that they were just overcrowded and needed more space. They could in fact readjust and create that space. Maybe giving up the dog park, but at least the access would be available, as opposed to saying there's nothing there and people are just stuck.
I agree with that. Personally, I support that view. Alistair, do you have any thoughts?
No, no, Mr. Chairman. I'll go along with what the general feeling that people put forward myself.
Yeah, I would support. I would support the waiver, absolutely.
Neil? Nelson?
Yes.
Okay, so you got a sense that the waiver is likely to be supported, but we'll address that with a formal waiver submission when we reconvene on this one. Other items of discussion on the site plan in general?
I just had one other question, Mr. Chairman. It has to do with the roads, particularly Benning Court and Pioneer Way. Are these roads built to town standards in each case, where they can be? Because when you get to the end of Pioneer Way, when you wind up sort of... The end of Pioneer Way really ends at the beginning of the parking lot, and then leaps over to a cul-de-sac at the other end. So that's why I kind of asked the question.
I'll address both roads separately. Benning Court, the entrance drive, was, I think in the 2014 CUP approval, was represented as a public road with a public right-of-way. In our meetings with Public Works last year, they indicated they would not support a public road on this property, so that was then converted to a private street. That road itself physically will be built to town standards, and that also would be easily convertible to a public road, though Public Works will likely want that to remain private.
Sure.
Pioneer Way, it will also be physically built to town standards in terms of widths and curb and pavement thicknesses. That would be a little tougher to create a right-of-way off of that one, because it kind of bisects and loops around, so I don't see that ever becoming a public way without some serious effort.
But all the way to the cul-de-sac.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say. So you say built to town standards, but town standards wouldn't incorporate a road that goes through a parking lot kind of as the aisleway between the rows of cars?
So we transitioned there kind of at the bottom of the hill from a standard typical section, you know, 28-foot road into the parking lot area, and then as I mentioned, at the end of the project, we wanted, at the bottom of the hill, we wanted to make sure we provided adequate emergency vehicle turnaround and bus turnaround, so it is a little bit of a combo at that part of the site, though we're still expected to use the town's, you know, road-based thicknesses and curb type, and it would meet some of the construction standards, I should say.
Excellent. Thank you for going through that and pointing it out. Is that your question, Nelson?
That pretty much takes care of my question, yes.
So I have a question about the dog park. Some general discussion about the location of a dog park with this close in proximity to the brook and in the river, and whether there's any environmental issues that come from dog waste and the population of dogs being focused in one area, and what if anything the applicant would do to manage that situation if there is any necessary environmental impact that comes from kind of concentrating the dog population?
Yes, so we did receive that comment from Public Works, essentially that they're looking for us to address that such thing, that the dog waste, the dog park is considered a higher level in terms of a use. And so they're looking for us to essentially provide two things. We're going to look at which treatment practices, stormwater treatment practices in our menu of those to choose from best addresses those pollutants that come from dog waste. That would be step one. Step two would be signage and waste receptacles, and making sure that the program itself is minimizing the amount of dog waste that's actually infiltrated into the ground, so.
I like, I like both approaches, but particularly like the idea of signage and receptacles and all of those kinds of things, and if those ultimately become part of your site plan, then, you know, get them on a plan.
They will be, yes. Public Works has specifically asked for those, as well as the town's peer review consultant, so.
It isn't necessarily something that's enforced through our site plan review, but we have had a different project, a different proposal, where the applicant had committed to really policing their own tenants and making sure that they picked up their own waste, and I think they were even DNA-testing dogs, so that they could identify which owner it was that was breaking the rules. And it seemed like a very, very in-depth thing for them to do, but apparently the owner thought it was a manageable situation, and I think that's probably what it takes to make people do what they're supposed to do with that. I see your hand come up. We're going to do some public comments in just a minute, so we'll get to that stuff. But having some receptacles and encouraging people to pick it up. Honestly, you know, if you didn't have a dog park, everybody would walk their dogs up and down the sidewalks around here, and you'd have the same amount of dog waste on this site as you would whether you put it in a park, so I'm not sure how much different it is when you concentrate it into a 50... And I'm not sure that everybody's going to take their dog to the dog park to do their business, or whether they're going to walk them for a few minutes outside. And obviously, it's not a dog park that's opened outside residents. It's just for the people who are living here, so ultimately, I'm not sure how many dogs you're really concentrating in that area. So I'm not sure that it's the most difficult engineering problem in the world, in my view, to solve with that.
Except, Mr. Chairman, with the Department of Environmental Services slowly but surely screwing up on, tightening down on regulations, it's important that we ask the developer to put it in, rather than not put it in, and then a year down the road, we find it's got to be done to meet DES requirements, at which point the cost of doing it might fall on the citizen's, which I would be very unhappy about.
Yes. I agree with all of that, except that it's not the state DES that's doing these things, it's the Federals. But it's different agency, same problem.
Government in its widest terms.
Yes. Yeah, in its worst terms, for sure, I think, at least in this regard.
Mr. Chairman, the drainage around that dog park does go into that stormwater management area. It doesn't, and with the railroad buffer there between the river and the, and that stormwater management area between them and the brook, chances are any runoff's going to get managed fairly well, because it's a fairly long distance around that.
I thought so too, and I was just kind of picking up on some of the comments that were raised by Public Works in order to sort of hear the development of the discussion a bit, but I also thought that there's a lot of room to create some solutions here. One of the things that did occur to me as we were talking about dumpsters and dumpster pads and all of that, and I was flipping through some of the later pages that showed the site plans for the individual buildings, just label all that stuff on the drawings, because even on the drawings where you can see the detail pretty close up, it doesn't really describe what it is.
Will do.
Other comments or questions on site plan in general?
Just to clarify, you said something about sewer connections in your presentation, and I was distracted by something else. You're connecting across the highway from your development across Benning Court or something? Is that right?
It's all the way down at the north end of the parcel, so.
Yeah, but Attorney Westgate is pointing to the location. It's right across from Bowers Landing, is the location we're tying in. So we've got gravity sewer located in Benning Court. It then runs cross-country along the frontage of Lot 7 and Lot 6-2 to the north. Public Works asks that that sewer line be private and be located off and outside the right-of-way. So then we come down to a sewer manhole just across from Bowers Landing Drive and the Dunkin' Donuts down there, which we provide a public easement for that last manhole, and then come across Daniel Webster Highway with a cut and connect into the sewer on the westerly side of the road. We reviewed that with Public Works. That was the approach that they were looking for from us, and we've got to do 100-foot mill and overlay each way on Daniel Webster Highway per DOT as part of that.
And you had to comment on one of these, that you're going to, you're going to request to vacate the easement on the back of the property, on the east side of the property. There's a 20-foot easement for sewer at this point?
Correct.
And you're going to make a request to remove that?
Correct.
And does that cut off the DOT land from sewer access, or would they be expected to, if that ever got developed, to go up DW Highway to connect in where you guys are connecting?
Correct, yeah. We were told from Public Works that... So the 2014 CUP was approved with the idea that we would tie in via gravity connection along the town's existing public sewer easement behind the former Nashville Court Building along the railroad. On this go-around, it was, we were told we were not able to access that, so I would imagine any future development would need to tie into Daniel Webster Highway as we have.
So you mentioned there's going to be a pump station for the buildings that are on the lower section of the site. Where, is that it within the apartment buildings, or is the pump station freestanding?
The private pump station is located right here. There's a little building right there. So we're gravity sewer-ing the upper portion of the site. We'll leave stub for these future development lots in Building One, and starting at the clubhouse, it'll gravity sewer back down here to a private pump station. Buildings Four and Three will also gravity to this pump station, and that'll be pumped all the way back up to the hill. And then again, run gravity here to here and into the town sewer.
So as you go across country, as you've put it across 4-2 and 4-1, or?
Six, 2, and 7.
Six, 2, and 7. I understand the DPW wants it outside of their right-of-way and cross-country and all of that. I would anticipate that our review of the ultimate developments of those two lots, whenever that comes forward, we would want the building, the sewer not to run under buildings. And so think that, think ahead at least that far, since you don't know what those are going to be, or where those buildings would be. As you locate that sewer, keep in mind that that'll be a limitation on the development of those future sites.
It's stuffed right up near the property line within what will be a landscape buffer area.
Perfect.
Within that front yard setback area.
So from the clubhouse and Building Two, you're going to run down the hill, and then you're going to run it, pump it right back up to the hill?
Pump it right back up, yes.
Bypassing lines or something like that?
Yeah, starting about right here on Pioneer Way, our sewer would be too low to gravity back.
So all of that's going to have a line down, and then another line's going to come back up?
Correct.
The street, right? You're not going to go across country?
Correct, yeah. It ties back into the gravity system right here about at this driveway. So starting from here, this is all a gravity system. The force main runs from here to here along that, along Pioneer Way.
Okay. I don't have any other questions on the top of my mind. I did want to say that I did think that the buildings were very nice-looking, and I think the architect did a good job of kind of capturing what you were talking about before with a bit modern, but also kind of has a common feel to some other buildings that you see in the region and the area. Other comments or questions? Let's have a public hearing on the site plan section of this one. Are there any butters or interested citizens who wish to weigh in on the site plan portion of this development? Please come forward. Let me make sure you get a microphone and a chance to sign in on the clipboard. When you're ready, please introduce yourself again and tell us what's on your mind.
Richard Foot, 129 Indian Rock Road, and Marimrock, of course. As far as the project goes, you look at it and say, "It looks nice and everything." That's great. My mind is like all the other projects in town that get approval. It's more urban sprawl than in the end the town will pay for. It may be tax-positive right now, but, yeah. If you give it a few years down the road, and you build, everything else is built out too, and it just adds up. It'll need more firefighters, more police, more everything else, and it costs a lot up, and pretty soon it won't be tax-positive anymore. That's my two cents. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Foot, for the comment. Are there other butters or citizens who wish to weigh in? You're... Chance? Feeling you're more than an a-butter interested citizen.
I am. My name is Bob Simons from SMC Management, and I just wanted to talk to you a dog.
Okay.
So across our portfolio, we have a policy... So across our portfolio, we have a policy of anyone that brings a dog-
Touch your microphone or bring it a little closer to you?
I'm sorry. Anyone that wants to have a pet in one of our properties submits for DNA for the dog. If they don't pick up their waste, it's $150 fine. The second offense, it's a $250 fine. And the third offense, they're evicted. Adam, as part of the design of the building, is integrating a dog wash station in each of the residential buildings in all of our new projects. So when someone gets done with the dog walk, they come in the building. There's a stainless steel area where they can wash the dog, dry the dog, shampoo the dog, and then take them up to their units. But people feel very dearly about their pets, and we feel very dearly about our properties. So it's a nice synergy.
Absolutely. Do you have any limits on size of dogs or number of dogs, or any of those kinds of things?
Well, so we used to limit the dogs, and we didn't allow dogs larger than 60 pounds. What we found was, we had a lot of small, loud dogs. And when we expanded the weight limit of the dogs, we found that we got more like golden retrievers and quieter dogs. And so the whole properties actually became quieter with the larger dogs.
What's, do you guys have a sense of how number of dogs per apartment building, the way we, we sort of have all these statistics to know how many kids there's going to be, but I don't know if we have any studies about that.
Yeah. So we've been talking to the property managers, and I think we're approaching, we're exceeding 70% of our tenants actually have pets.
Wow.
Across the board. Yeah. So it's a lot of, a lot of animals. Yeah.
It's less than 10% that have kids.
So it's very important that we, that we take care of the waste. The other thing that we're doing, we're spending a lot of time identifying how to take care of urine stains in the grass, because that's a big thing. And what, what we're leaning towards is watering the water, watering the grass does better than chemicals. So, you know, we're starting to pay a lot more attention to that whole issue.
So will you have irrigation or sprinklers along your sidewalks, along Pioneer Way and all of that?
Yeah. Yeah, we fully sprinkled all of our properties.
Okay. Thank you for that. There's usually, from the Conservation Commission, some discussion about using fertilizers and all of that. I assume you wouldn't have any problems with that kind of, do you understand what their limitations usually are?
Well, not personally, but once they're built and stabilized, our property managers are using green snow plow guys, more and more natural fertilizers as the years go on. And what we find is, with the irrigation systems, we tend to need less fertilizer because the water does what, what other people are spreading fertilizers to do.
Yeah. So on this site, I'm almost certain, if they haven't given you the recommendation, then they certainly would, when you get a chance to see them, that they'd want to see low nitrogen, slow-release fertilizers, and usually some soil testing before you even apply some fertilizers to see if you actually need some. And I, I don't know whether it would be one of their recommendations, but it's certainly sometimes something the planning board comes up with to ask about either drought-resistant or, or low-impact landscaping plans to try to minimize the amount of need for fertilizer, and then the eventual runoff into the brooks and streams.
Yeah. And I think Tom's got a landscape architect that's done a lot of that already.
I did see a lot of very detailed architecture of landscaping plans in this big package of stuff. Robert, did you have a comment?
I just wanted to note the applicant did go to the Conservation Commission already, and their comments are in the staff memo under Item 7.
Are they?
Yes.
Okay, excellent. It might have been a while ago, because usually I get them from the Conservation Commission, and they're relatively close timing to when we're going to hear from them. So you probably do have a whole-
Thank you very much.
Thank you for giving us the explanation for that. And I think you got a very thorough plan for how you're going to deal with dogs.
Yeah. Thank you.
Appreciate it. I know you weren't really an abutter, but that was still part of the public hearing. Are there any other abutters or citizens who wish to weigh in? All right, then we'll close the public hearing and invite the applicant back in. And let's sort of take inventory of where we stand with things, and what, what we need to collect or gather in order to be ready for a final vote on a project. I know that there are some feedback from our peer review that needs to be accommodated a little bit, and some changes in the plans. We've talked about a few different things, like labeling and getting the subdivision plan that we talked about earlier. Members of the board, or Robert, or the applicant, if you have thoughts about some other things that we need to accomplish between now and when we're ready for a final vote, let's have a discussion about those things. Kind of take, take inventory of where things stand.
For me, the biggest thing, as you mentioned there, a number of review comments that were issued over the last few months because of the way things have played out with the CUP, and now the subdivision and the site plan. I understand staff is recommending to, to continue this to the February 5 meeting or an acceptable date, which is fine with us. We've been kind of sitting on these comments, ready to go to address, as well as the comments from the board here tonight. So I hope to be sitting in front of you in about a month with a number of happy letters from the various departments and peer review consultants and DES stating that we have indeed addressed their concerns, as well as those that you've brought up tonight. For me, the biggest thing was the, the direction on the waiver for parking, which I've gotten. We will go ahead and submit that as part of our recent middle package. I'm not aware of any other waivers that are required of us for the site plan portion of the project.
Generally not. Since it's part of a CUP, a lot of these things end up being kind of built into it. I don't know what the peer review results are with respect to the lighting plan. I didn't necessarily dig into the landscape plan to look at the species you've chosen. Obviously, we want those to be native and non-invasive, and sometimes there's a few species that tend to appear in the list that aren't necessarily widely known to be invasive or non-native. So give that extra scrutiny.
Yeah, I think we had about 90% that probably was on the, the list. I think the landscape architect may or may not want to push back on maybe one of the species that he felt was drought-resistant and tolerant to this area, but we'll provide that as part of our response, that I think for the most part-
Did you get some feedback from Conscom or something on some of the species?
We did as well, yeah. Yeah, there were a couple notes that slipped through about, you know, as Bob mentioned, the Green Snow Pro certification. We've committed to that. That's on the plan about, and then fertilizer use as well. That was kind of the big discussion. There were a couple fertilizer notes that slipped through in the back of the package from the landscape architect that we'll clean up as well as part of this. That was really it.
What's the species of planting or tree that's at issue?
You'd have to ask me. I don't know off the top of my head.
Okay.
I will give you the Latin name next time.
Perfect. I won't know what that means anyway. Nelson, did you have a comment?
Yeah, just one other comment. This should be reviewed by the Lower Merrimack River Local Advisory Committee. Do you have a plan to go before them, before?
We actually did appear before them, so, so as part of the AOT, the Alteration of Terrain Application-
Yeah.
They were providing a copy with that. And, and one of the property owners did attend one of their meetings, I believe, back at the end of October, and they did provide us some comments on that.
They did. Okay. I just didn't see any of the package, but-
Yeah, it was related to stormwater, snow storage, and then talking about the Heritage Trail, asking if we could provide something there.
I hadn't really focused much on what your plans are for snow storage on this site. Can you give me an overview of what your approach is to storing snow?
Well, one of the big holes in our plans was that we did not show any snow storage locations on the current plan set, which was comments we received from a number of different departments. And we'll be sure to show them on the next set of plans. I think there's plenty of open space located throughout the site. We'll have to really focus and drill down on where the, the basis of our planting, you know, is. We don't want to be pushing snow into major landscape areas. Along the lower portions of the site and the perimeter portions of the site, we're going to need to, to include some swales at toe of slopes, because one of the focuses, as you folks know, is to not only show snow storage area, but also to make sure those snow storage areas drain to the stormwater practices. So I assume snow will be pushed generally to the exterior portions of the parking lot. Again, I've got to look at where landscaping and site lighting is, but a lot of the snow will then be also pushed towards the, the lower portion of the site, towards the, the dog park area, where that stormwater basin is.
Generally speaking, you get, the snow storage is just going to be required or reported as it relates to the parking areas, the roadways. It tends to be pretty clear that they're going to be pushed to the side of the roadway, or if you get to a dead end, it ends up getting pushed straight to, towards the dead end.
Yeah. One advantage here is that we, we have a lot of parking, but it's kind of broken up throughout the site. We don't have, you know, one parking field with many, many, many spaces. So hopefully, we'll be able to disperse that snow pretty evenly throughout the site.
With a reasonably significant parking waiver already on your list of things to accomplish, it probably goes without saying that you can't sacrifice any parking for snow storage in the winter. That can't be part of the plan to say, well, we'll kind of use excess parking spaces or the end of the cul-de-sac, or something like that for storage. I'm sure you knew that before I said it. Other comments or questions?
Your plan to maintain your sidewalk clear.
Okay. Attorney Westgate just wanted to run, remind me of the conversation we had about the sidewalk connectivity and the clubhouse, building to building to, we'll take a look at that and have addressed that as part of the next meeting.
That'll help. So certainly want to see the sidewalk along the entrance driveway towards the clubhouse, where it is now, from Pioneer Way to the clubhouse. And then the interconnectivity between the buildings, evaluate that and let us know what you think you can accomplish reasonably with that, and what you'd like us to consider with that. I do agree with my colleagues here that some of that interconnectivity for the users that, you know, makes it feel like an integrated site, help. They help quite a bit. It'd be a good thing to see. Anything else that we need to make sure we accomplish before we-
Which, I was just going to ask about sidewalk clearing. If you're going to be clearing the streets and whatnot with snow and putting them somewhere, you're going to keep your sidewalks clear so that people can still walk around.
Do you have a plan for dealing with sidewalks in the wintertime?
In terms of-
Making sure they're accessible 12 months.
Possible.
I'm sorry. I missed the beginning portion of that.
Just keeping them passable so that people can walk on them in the wintertime. You're going to clear the streets, and you push snow off the parking lots-
Correct, yeah.
You're going to keep it off the sidewalk.
So the entire development's going to be owned and operated by SMC, and they have their own maintenance folks who are going to come and plow and clear and make sure-
And keep the sidewalks clear, too.
Correct, yes. I'm sorry, I didn't, I missed the being-
Wanted you to say yes, and you had the right direction. Thank you.
Yes.
I also didn't take a deep dive into your lighting plan to see, and I'm sure you comply with all the technical requirements about candle powers here and there. I'm more interested in kind of a general discussion about whether you feel like the parking lots are sufficiently lit to be safe, and where there might be some light lamp posts and things placed along sidewalks and things to kind of make the facility usable and useful enough for the applicants.
Yep. So the one, the comment that I have on that is that the site lighting plan that's before you is going to change, in that that plan was submitted with, I would say, more of a residential subdivision, town and country type light. And we've since switched to a more modern LED-type full cutoff fixture. So the new site lighting plan will be submitted. With those type lights, we're able to better control lighting levels throughout parking and provide a little more uniform lighting, so it will be well lit.
So your intention is that the parking lots are all at least somewhat lit, and the roadways and sidewalks out to the dog park and all that have some, some lighting that makes them useful?
Correct, yeah.
Roster?
I've noticed in one or two areas, not referring anything special, that people put these, what I call little blue lights on a post, so that if somebody's being attacked by goodness knows what, they can hit, press, and the police will respond. Can I, are you going to put those sort of things in?
I'd have to ask Bob. I'm not aware of any of those locations. I've seen those on campus-style housing.
Well, I can think of plenty of campus-style bases, and I believe even the development, we've got our executive drive was going to have crisis lighting, crisis.
I'll have Bob come up and answer that.
Sure. I wonder whether those kinds of things sort of require you to have some security personnel to respond to them, because it's private property.
Yeah. So we have looked into those blue light devices, and they come with a certain amount of liability as well. But we do, we are doing more and more video cameras on the exterior of the buildings. We are focusing on lighting to make it a safe environment. But currently, we don't have any of those blue lights on any of the properties, and have thought about it, and it doesn't fit very well with our business.
Okay. Thank you. Other comments or questions? I think we've covered all the things that we need to accomplish between meetings, unless you guys have some others that we haven't touched yet.
Yeah, so one item that we haven't touched on is, is the buffering. And there are still some requirements that we are, need to address as part of the third-party settlement agreement that we've talked about. Specifically, there may be a requirement to build a fence and berm along the common property line between the residential lot and the former Nashua Corp abutter to our north. So one thing we had talked to Tim about is providing a little bit of flexibility in terms of what designation. I think everything we're showing on the current plan right here matches or conforms with one of the categories that, that are located in the site plan package. But as we move along and further define what our requirements are under that settlement agreement, those buffers may change slightly in that, for instance, right now, we have a D4 buffer between the dog park area and that abutting property line, meaning 100-plus feet of existing vegetation. If we are required to build a fence and berm along that property line, there may be some land clearing involved to build that fence and berm. So that buffer may become a D3, which is 50 feet of natural buffer with some supplementation. So one thing we just had to ask for staff is if, in, in our designations, we could be vague in listing a D-type buffer and not necessarily committing to, to one or the other.
When will you kind of have a sense of what your final plan is?
Our, our thought was, was potentially between a, a possible conditional approval and a final approval, if there was a gap there. I think it's a big what-if scenario, and the likelihood is what we're showing on the plan that, that could possibly get approved is, is what we'll go with. But we at least wanted to have that conversation and be open about that.
So as we come together next time, bring with us sort of what your first option is, with a description, you know, D4 is 100 feet. And then if you can't do that, then you'd do a D3, and tell us exactly how you'd plan that out. Ultimately, the conditional approval is the last time the whole board looks at it. The final approval is reviewed by staff and the co-chair and I. And, and so if there's a significant change from a D3, a D4 to a D3, I want to make sure that the other board gets a chance to know what those are and make sure they have a comfort level with it.
Correct, correct.
So when it comes to the final, I don't have any reservations about-
Not to muddy the waters, but another example would be behind existing Lot 6-2 or Lot A under the CUP. As part of that approval, we committed to building a fence and berm behind that lot instead of bisecting Lots A and B with a fence. So that will also need to be included in this revised site plan package, so.
Okay. Would it be in this site plan, or when A comes forward?
We've committed to building it as part of this first phase.
Okay.
So it will be included as part of this package.
Okay.
And under the settlement agreement, we have obligations to do this berm and fencing arrangement. So, so that's why it's contemplated to be bermed and fenced. I've just done bermed and fenced here, and simply fenced along the E and M. But we're in discussions under the settlement agreement to, to perhaps not have to berm and fence all of this, but keep some of, keep some of the vegetation in the steep slope area and you, and work it that way. But that requires consent from the other parties of the settlement agreement to do so.
Trying to limit the land clearing there to protect that natural.
We have, so therefore, we have to have some flexibility in what we propose to you to both meet the settlement agreement on the one hand, and meet your regs on the other hand. That's what we're trying to finalize.
Okay. I don't have a problem being flexible on, on those choices, as long as you're kind of giving me a description of what choice A, choice B, or choice C is, and we can kind of really understand what it involves. You've got pretty good separation there, and so really, I think that the settlement agreement is going to be more demanding of you than anything our regulations would have imposed.
That's true.
Correct.
Other comments or questions?
[inaudible]
Okay. So we've identified what we're trying to accomplish. February 22 is when we think we would have that accomplished. Is that our-
7:5.
February 5th? February 5th. Fine with me. Fine with me. That seems reasonable for you guys to do that and we can get on an agenda. Are we ready to take that action to continue to February 5th? Is there anything else we have to accomplish? If not?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion. We continue this matter till the 5th of February with no further notice to abutters at 7:00 PM in this room on February the 5th.
Great. Thank you. Is there a second for Alistair's motion?
Second.
Second by Nelson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? 600 to continue to February the 5th.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for the presentation and all the details.
Very much.
We are up to a couple of items that we had already indicated we would undertake a continuance at the request of the applicants, but let me read them into the record so that we can go through them. Item six is Mark Rivet as the applicant and owner, continued review for consideration of a site plan for the construction of a 1,920 square foot garage and function room addition and associated site improvements. The parcels are located at 425 Daniel Webster Highway in the C2 General Commercial and Aqua for Conservation, Flood Hazard Conservation, Elderly Housing, and Town Center Overlay Districts, Tax Map 5D4, Lot 77 and 78. It is continued from September 4th, October 2nd, November 13th, December 18th meetings. And the applicant has requested that we continue to?
January 22.
January 22nd. Is there any discussion by members of board?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we accept the request of the applicant to continue this matter till January the 22nd with no further notice to abutters.
Is there a second for Alistair's motion?
Get somebody.
Nelson. I would also comment for the record that the applicant has agreed to extend the 65-day review period as a result of this request. And with that comment, if there's no further discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Unanimous 600 to continue item six. Item seven is the Wired Barn LLC. As the applicant and owner, continued review for acceptance and consideration of a waiver of full site plan review for a change of use to allow a dog mording and daycare business in addition to the existing residential dwelling. The parcels located at 3 Wire Road in the C2 General Commercial, Flood Hazard Conservation and Aqua for Conservation Districts, Tax Map 2B, Lot 293-1. And we originally continued this from our December 18th meeting. The applicant is requesting a continuance to January 22nd.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion. We continue this matter also till January the 22nd with no further notice to abutters.
Is there a second for Alistair's motion? Second by Dan. If there's any discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? 600 to continue item seven. Item eight on our agenda is P&amp;L Landscaping as the applicant and Siem For Realty LLC as the owner. Review for acceptance and consideration of a waiver of full site plan review to permit employee parking for an off-site landscaping business in addition to the existing onsite restaurant use. The parcels located at 75 Daniel Webster Highway in the I-1 Industrial and Aqua for Conservation Districts, Tax Map 2D, Lot 28. Robert, is there anything that we need to know before we hear from the applicant?
No. I'll just reiterate that the board has discussed this site at length over the past several months. Previous proposals included a moving business as well as parking for P&amp;L Landscaping employees on the site. The moving business has decided not to pursue this location, and they are removing all their equipment from the site and the trailers that are there by January 13th. P&amp;L Landscaping has decided they still need to pursue the parking of their employee vehicles only here. This is not anything to do with their commercial equipment of any kind. It's just their employees. So they've filed a new application just for that element of the plan.
Thank you, Robert, for that introduction. And please introduce yourself and tell us what we got.
Hi. My name is Eric Brand. I'm the owner of P&amp;L Landscaping and Brand Family Properties. I own the property next door to Luna Capriese. We've kind of had a continuation until we realized there was a violation going on when the moving company had came in, which is basically a continuation of our employees' parking in the rear end of the parking lot out of the way of any of the patrons of the restaurant. We've been doing that for about 11 years now. We're not changing anything on the plan. It's just a different use as far as having our employees park in that rear end of the parking lot. From the counts that I have gone through with Mr. Price, seemed like there's an abundance of parking spaces that would still be adequately sufficient for the number of spaces required for the restaurant as well as the number of spaces that we would be utilizing, and there were still some additional spaces. So we're not looking to change the site plan, just personal vehicles, no tractor trailers, nothing of that nature, just personally registered vehicles of the employees.
Thank you for the explanation. I think it is a lot clearer now to understand what's going on now that it's just the personal vehicles for your employees. So you're looking to use about 23 of their spaces?
Correct.
And I think the staff analysis indicates that there's more than enough in our formula for what the restaurant would require plus these 23 as they exist on the site. Is that correct?
Correct.
Other comments or questions by members of the board?
Do you have a plan to make any changes at all to the property as it stands today? Or are you just going to continue to do what you've been doing?
Just continue doing what we were doing. There was, as far as I knew, everything else in the site plan from the previous owners pretty much had been done at one point or another, whether it's been maintained or not. According to the site plan, that I can't necessarily verify. I don't own that property. I'm just trying to.
No, I understand. There's been three or four different site plans hashed out and drawn up, and this one still shows gravel for the major portion of the back lot.
Which is still that way.
Which is there. And are you parking in where they're showing lines on this plan? Or are you parking along the side of the property?
So what we actually did when this all came about six months ago, we wanted to verify ourselves with myself and a few of my employees went out there, measured off the area, and actually striped the gravel to make it easier for our employees to be able to not take up, you know, one and a half spaces per se because there weren't any lines there. So we did line it a few times during the summer, also with the anticipation that there may have been some board members that may have wanted to go out and actually take a look at it. We trimmed up some brush that was out back there, and we also put up some no parking signs along the side to make sure that people weren't just kind of parking, you know, freely.
Renting, parking everywhere.
And again, before, there weren't any lines, so it really didn't give anybody any clear direction. But for me, I wanted to make sure it was safe for people to pass along there, somebody didn't park in a way that was obstructing other vehicles from going around, et cetera.
Okay. Thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Other comments? Neil?
That actually answered my question.
Oh, perfect. Yeah. Other comments or questions? And so the first order of business for the board is to accept the application as complete.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we accept that the application is complete, enabling us to contain sufficient information to enable us to make a decision on this matter.
Is there a second for Alistair's motion? Second by Nelson. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? 600 to determine that it's complete. Are there any abutters or interested citizens who wish to weigh in on the application? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Does the board have further discussion with the applicant with respect to the request to allow the use of 23 parking spaces for the personal vehicles of the employees of P&amp;L Landscaping?
Mr. Chairman, technically, I believe we should make a waiver, a motion to waive a full site plan review.
Excellent choice. I assume that was a motion.
It was.
Is there a second for Alistair's motion? Second by Nelson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining?
Basically, I should have added, of course, that this strict conformity would propose an unnecessary hardship to the applicant, and it's not contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulations.
Excellent. Now that we've waived full site plan review, is there some continued discussion regarding final disposition of the application? What's that?
Did we vote on the waiver?
Yeah, we did before he added the.
Oh, before he added the comment.
Before he added the.
I remembered. I'm sure you did.
The motion after the vote.
Mr. Chairman.
Justified the motion.
Can I therefore, since it's all gone quiet, based on, I would say, we recommend that we grant conditional final approval to the application on the, according to the plans and according to the note from Kelly Schimmel dated January the 3rd, 2019.
Is there a second for Alistair's motion to grant conditional final approval? Nelson?
I'll second it, but I want to add one thing.
Sure, please.
The condition being that the moving vans and all of that equipment be removed from the site by whatever the date was that they asked for.
That doesn't, if I may, that doesn't need to be a condition of the site. That's a separate service request that our department's dealing with directly with the property owner and with the applicant who came before the board. So we'll be pursuing that separately. It doesn't have to be a condition on this site plan.
Well, I want them tied together some way, right? I mean, I want to discover that there's more trucks there in April than there were.
Mr. Chairman, if you read the note from Kelly dated January the 3rd, 2019, it does specifically say that they will be gone by the January the 13th, 2019. And on the basis of that, if we approve the motion and it doesn't happen, then effectively we're authorizing the staff to take the necessary remedial action to get them moved.
Well, I certainly get that, but I think, I think what Nelson's after is a sense that this applicant, not you, but the property owner, has some out-of-compliance situation that needs to be remedied before they get the benefit of approval of something new. And I don't mind having a condition of approval that the applicant remedy its lack of compliance with other regulations.
Based on our experience, I think that would be appropriate.
And I think they will. I mean, and I don't want to be such a stickler that says if it's not the 13th, you're in trouble. I don't care if it's the 25th, but get it done.
If I may?
Please.
I've had my own conversations with them because they were back and forth if they were going to do a full site plan as we had discussed previously. That was kind of one direction, and then they, a week later, changed their mind and said, no, we found another place and we're going to be moving. I know during the holiday season, they do a lot of trucking that has to do with the holidays. So they had requested through Mr. Price that, you know, can we have till after the holidays to be able to get all the vehicles out and trailers? So to my knowledge, I haven't actually physically gone to look since the holidays have been over myself, but that was their intent to get everything out of there, just for some information.
Yeah. I'm glad to hear all of that, and I don't have a reason to believe it wouldn't be, other than the fact that we've had an ongoing discussion here for six months about this site. And I wanted to be sure there was some condition put on this approval.
I understand. I was just trying to give you that information.
And if I could just add too to what Mr. Brand stated, originally, the terms of the
way the board did not deem the previous plan complete, the trucks had to be off the site by December 13th. We were contacted by that previous applicant requesting that extension to January 13th so they could do what Mr. Brand described. We were okay with that, so, and that's where we are right now, just for informational purposes.
I'm okay with it too. Just wanted to put it in the motion.
Could one ask, Robert, do you know where they're going?
I do not. I know they are based out of London Dairy, so perhaps there, but I honestly do not.
They're not in Arbeiderwick.
Correct.
Although there's moving companies around where they could find some common area if they wanted to. I still, I don't think that there's any harm in Nelson's suggestion that one of the conditions of approval is that they remedy noncompliance, any existing noncompliance.
How do you do that when it isn't the applicant, isn't the owner of the site?
It is the applicant.
Is he?
Right there.
Oh, I see. Okay. Mr. Chairman, I bow to your superior judgment. And I'm happy to incorporate your suggestion in my motion.
Thank you. That's what I was looking for.
Okay. So I've lost my place now. Did someone already second the motion for final approval? Nelson with that comment. Okay. So we've amended the motion consistent.
And seconded it.
Amended the second. Is there any other discussion? All in favor of granting conditional final approval, subject conditions in the memo and the ones discussed here tonight, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? 600. So you are all set.
Thank you very much, and thank you for your patience with the previous applicant and what we've gone through to try to get here. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for the proposal, and I think that it's a much better result in terms of the usability of the restaurant to have it done with basically civilian vehicles on the site only.
Okay. Thank you.
Where's my agenda? Next item on the agenda is item number nine. It is the John Flatley Company as the applicant and Gilbert Crossing LLC and John J. Flatley as the owners. It's review for consideration of an amendment to a previously approved mixed-use development conditional use permit. The parcels are located at 645, 673, 685, 703, and 707 Daniel Webster Highway in I-1 Industrial, Aqua for Conservation, and Wellhead Protection Districts, Tax Map 6E, Lot 31, 33, 34, 35, and 36. As has been my practice throughout, I will recuse myself from the consideration of this application and go sit over in the peanut gallery.
Okay, Mr. Wolf, when you're ready, please feel free to start. Oh, sorry. You're going to do it. Whichever is going to do it, I don't really mind. If you're going to do it.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, my name is Chad Brandon. I'm a civil engineer with Fieldstone Land Consultants. Our office is located at 206 Elm Street in Milford, New Hampshire, and with me tonight is Kevin Walker from the John Flatley Company. We are before you this evening to discuss a potential modification to our conditional use permit, which was issued back on November 18th of 2014. And as you may recall, I think the majority of the board members were on the board at that time, but as you may recall, this property was part of a master plan development that was approved with, through a conditional use permit process. And we do have the master development plan before you this evening, so we can talk about that. The first phase of the development that was agreed upon and addressed in the development agreement was four multifamily residential apartment buildings. Those are under construction. And then the second phase of the development had to consist of a commercial component. And the development agreement states that if the commercial component is situated south of the St. Cobain entrance, that it should consist of, or should consist of vehicular and pedestrian connection as applicable. And it was our understanding, and frankly, still is our understanding, that we believe we are operating under the development agreement with our current proposal. If you recall, we were before the board on November 13th of 2018. We presented a conceptual plan for a commercial development that was just south of the St. Cobain main entrance. And at that meeting, we were essentially stating that we were not planning on a vehicular or pedestrian connection. And if I may, I'm just going to grab the mic and approach the plan if I could, Mr. Chairman.
Please do.
So what we're essentially proposing is a redevelopment or a new concept plan for this portion of the site. This portion of the site is about 2,300 linear feet away from the residential development. And it was our understanding, and we, you know, there was minutes in the staff, you know, attached to the staff memo where clearly there was a discussion about how we felt pending on where the next development is, pedestrian and vehicular connection really could be deemed unreasonable just because of the sheer length that we could be talking about. But maybe it's reasonable depending on what area we're looking at. So in any case, we were, again, before you in November, we presented this plan, which was a redevelopment plan of that commercial portion, St. Cobain entrance is here. And from this point to the residential site is 2,300 feet. We felt this plan was a, we still feel, this plan is a substantial development. We're not contemplating a small commercial component just to satisfy the requirements. We're contemplating a substantial commercial development, large investment. There'll still be, you know, a loop road here where emergency vehicles will have two forms of access. What's really happening here, if you take a look at the. What's really happening here, if you take a look at the property, what my clients determined is that there's a market for smaller retail use. When you look from the residential development head north on the property, the smaller retail use belongs where the property is narrowed, that's here. These portions of the property are much larger, so we can accommodate a bigger user once we've established that retail development on the site. There has been some interest since 2014. I know I've worked on a number of concepts myself, but unfortunately, they haven't been, you know, landed necessarily. But maybe with this additional commercial space, we, you know, that will be the next part of the project. There is obviously a difference of opinion in what's required, which is why we're before you this evening. We don't believe that the development agreement states that we have to have a vehicular and pedestrian connection. We still believe that this project and everything that we're proposing meets the intent of the original approval, meets the intent of the master plan. It quite clearly follows still generally the plan that we presented and we're looking for approval on. We're not saying we don't plan on connecting and we're not opposed to a pedestrian connection. But a 2,300-foot road upwards of $1.5 million when you contemplate, you know, road construction, drainage, associated permitting, that's an investment that would probably result in this project not going forward. I can't speak to that myself, but I've heard that being thrown around and I'm sure Mr. Walker can touch on that. So we're before you tonight, looking for a modification for the, of the conditional use permit, really to resolve our differences in opinion. The development agreement, which is signed, executed, and recorded, says as applied. The minutes of the meeting clearly state that the board would like there to be connection. It also clearly states our opposition to the connection. And so we can talk about that and be happy to go through, you know, the minutes. I mean, obviously, I was the one presenting the plan. Mr. Walker also attended the meeting and Mr. Thompson was at the meeting. So I don't think any of us have any malicious intents, but we're looking to move forward and that's why we're here this evening, hoping we can make a, you know, adjustment to the conditional use permit that'll allow us to go forward with the design and permitting of this plan. And as I stated, we would be willing to incorporate a pedestrian connection. I think that still addresses the fact that it is a common project. We will certainly be working, you know, in this direction with future users. Odds are, this is the last portion of the site to be developed just because it is the largest, you know, property and, and it's really a rare property. There's not a lot of parcels out there that could accommodate, you know, a large building in development like that, I believe in Meramec anymore, other than maybe this property out and back, which isn't even part of the master. So the, you know, there's some statements in the staff memo that we, you know, don't necessarily agree with. The, you know, the industrial building to the rear was never part of the project, never part of the mixed-use development, so I don't think that really had any ties to the language of the development agreement. But I don't necessarily want to go into that. I just, you know, want to present what we're proposing and try to answer any questions or concerns that the board may have this evening. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I'd be happy to try to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you very much, Mr. Brand. Can I just, first of all, before anybody else weighs in, just ask you the question. Have you seen the memo dated January 3, 2019 from Mr. Thompson?
I obviously have seen that. What's, what happened after that is the development agreement. And the development, I believe the development, oh, the memo.
No, 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 no. The memo dated January 3, 2019.
Oh, I'm sorry.
In which Mr. Thompson clearly states that in his opinion, the purpose of the CUP was to provide connected units. Have you seen that memo?
I have seen that memo and I think that we're, we're not proposing a change to the plan that changes the master plan, which is to have connectivity. The, we're not changing that. We're looking to follow the development agreement and I think the master plan stands for itself. We haven't changed the layout. We still will be developing, you know, from, from north to south. We're willing to incorporate a pedestrian access or a interconnection, which will address some of that. But when you go through the conditional use permit requirements, there isn't a specific requirement in there that says you have to contemplate connectivity in Phase Two. It just says that the master plan shall contemplate connectivity and that our plan does. So we, we do satisfy the requirements of the regulations, I believe, with the plan that we have before you and the proposal that we would like to move forward with.
That is in your opinion, that's your interpretation, right? Fair enough. Can I ask any comments from my colleagues?
Well, I would have a different interpretation. I think I would agree with the comments offered by Tim Thompson. I think it's always been my belief and understanding, this is an integrated total development plan for a site with mixed use, which is why the mixed use is allowed in there. And it was always intended that it be connected and looked at as a whole. There's requirements that the buildings look alike. There's a lot of requirements that reflect back to that, that say, this is an integrated site. And that's what I think we need to see here. That'd be my opinion. That's what.
Thank you, Mr. Dischow. Does anybody else want to? Thank you. Please, Mr.
If I may, just address that too, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, please, please feel free.
And I, I don't disagree with that and I don't believe that, you know, the, the John Flatley Company disagrees with that either. This is, the, the overall plan is an integrated plan, but we have to get there. And the investment for a vehicular connection is substantial and we just think that there's a phased approach to get there and we didn't think that, you know, that has to happen on Phase Two. So, but inevitably, I agree. This is an integrated plan. It's a master plan for the, for the property. Thank you.
If I could just add too, you know, there's a reason we have the number of curb cuts onto DW Highway that we do. And that is for each pod, if you want to call it, of development. Otherwise, if the intent was to build 2,300 feet of roadway or more without knowing what was going out there, which we would never propose, that's kind of a waste, then we would have two. We would have one of the apartments and we'd use the St. Cobain driveway. But we know that the, you know, between emergency access, traffic circulation, that each pod would need some sort of, some sort of entrance and exit off of DW Highway, which is why we have the entrance between the two commercial pieces and we have the dedicated entrance for the big box. If you recall, that big box, if it remains a big box, it's going to depend on traffic that may end up being a signalized intersection. Again, if this was proposed to be just one big development, we would likely just have an entrance at each end and call it a day. But we knew that each portion of this development would want to have their own entrances. We wanted to make sure it was safe with throughways, multiple accesses, which we have. That was really the goal as far as drawing this out. And we had quite a discussion with DOT as far as the number of accesses on to DW Highway and we squared that away with them also. It was a little bit of a battle with DOT to get the amount of accesses on the DW Highway, but we thought it was best for the site and the proposed development, however it shook out, if the big box showed up, then we'd build the big box. We're lucky enough to be have, have some potential tenants for the northernly end, so we have a way in and out of that area also. And the fact remains that south of the area that we're speaking about now, that can change. Maybe, you know, that middle portion becomes a big box and the big box becomes a bunch of small boxes. Maybe the roadway doesn't connect to the apartments up and upward shown now. Maybe it connects down towards the bottom and loops through. There's just too many X-factors on it, which is why, you know, again, it's just one, one reason where, just practically, we don't think it's a good idea. Money aside, there's just a lot that can still change out here. Now, we're not proposing a three-story box with offices in it that happen to be the same size of apartments, so we can come back to you in six months and say, hey, we want to put apartments in. These are single-story, clearly retail, service-type buildings, restaurants. We're not coming back in here for, for any housing on this section. These are going to be retail. These are going to be apartments. I mean, a retail, they are going to be a restaurant. And we hope to, once this is built, continue as we have, continue with the next pod down and finish off, you know, down at the end there, whether it's a big box or another set of smaller retail and service-type establishments like we have on the northern end. You know, again, we're not sure. We're not there yet, but we're obviously need some leeway with, development-wise, with road placement, building placement, that type of thing, in order to successfully get this thing completed.
Tom, you were about to.
Yeah. You guys are putting a coffin, a nail in the coffin, as far as I'm concerned, with CUPs. This is about the third or fourth unit in town that's come back and said, well, we want to have this mixed-use integrated program. Not always CUPs. There was the one in the northern part of town that's now decided they had to be all apartments. They couldn't do any business in the buildings they had. But you guys, Edgebrook, other folks are coming forward to us and saying, we want a mixed use. We want to do this neat stuff that's going to make people have integrated capabilities and things like that. But we only want to build the residential first and the residential will bring in all the rest of the stuff. And so you argued for and got approval to build four out of five residential buildings without anything else on the lot. And Edgebrook is arguing that they should be able to build all of their residential without any commercial on the lot. And while I voted against that, the board went along with it because of the argument that they made.
They get to build it all?
Pardon?
They're building it all?
They're building, right now, they're proposing, earlier today, all of their residential. And again, I disagree with that. I don't think that's meeting the spirit and the intent of what I understood the CUPs were supposed to be. And obviously, the premium outlet place hasn't started their development, although they've got a plan together, which does show a more integrated overall thing. And they're not coming back and saying, we want to build just the residential piece right now. But it frustrates me that Edgebrook said, well, we let you guys do four buildings, so we should be letting them do buildings. And then you guys are saying, well, they're doing their buildings. We should, you know.
Well, I don't care what Edgebrook's doing.
Well, I'm glad to hear that because I'm still concerned that you're not going to have the integrated aspect of the CUP that you originally came forward to talk about. And yeah, this is one phase out of maybe five phases that you're, you're contemplating here for. But my understanding was that there would be more integration internally and that people that were moving into these apartments to encourage retail and commercial to come to the area, wouldn't have to go back out and fight DW Highway traffic in order to get over to that retail and commercial. And, and you're telling me that at least for some period of time, that's the only way they're going to get there, short of a 2,300-foot walk? And, you know, as a minimum, I think I would need that, just to have some kind of symbol or sign of connectivity, but.
We've got no problem with that and I mentioned that in our last meeting.
Yeah, I understand that.
You know, we, we could come in here, you know, remind me of standing up and getting fired up. You know, we could have come in here and said, we're going to build 2,500 square feet. Thanks.
You could have.
And met it, but that's not our goal.
And then you would have needed the entire road, as far as I'm concerned.
And I get that, but that, that's not, that's not what we do. So we're coming in here and we're trying to do this, in, kind of as a show, in pods, this, I would anticipate, this will get done something similar to this. And this, whether it's a big box or it's a pod of something a little more expansive than this, then, then that's what we'll do. We've got interest for these 30,000 square feet and we're ready to get going on it. The problem is, you know, it's twofold and I'm, I'm sorry if I'm repeating myself. You know, spending 1.5 million for a road that probably has a better than 50% chance of having to get ripped up and replaced in a different location, isn't the best thing to be thinking of when you're trying to provide, you know, development. And we believe overall that we can get a more definitive layout based on the developments that come in. This guy may say, hey, I want this building further back here. Can you run the road up here? Sure, we can do that. This may get flipped like this was flipped. It may not. We don't know yet. We're not quite there. This, what we've spoken with, they, they wanted them flipped, the people we've spoken with. So, so we're, that's why we have this layout here with them flipped. We're not trying, we're not trying to play games with the town or the board. We're trying to make a development like, like John Flatley's done all his developments, is a high-quality, well-thought-out, full-size development. We've got about 100 acres of property within this CUP. That's a lot of, it's a lot of land. It's a lot, a lot of development to contemplate. We took our first step. What we said at the beginning is, we get the apartments up, we have people in here, it'll draw people in. We believe we've got people to draw in here. So that's why we're taking our next step. And our thought is, when this gets filled up, we're going to be able to really kind of get moving on this and finish the whole thing up. I can't tell you how long it's going to take. Will it be five years? Will it be 10? Hopefully, it's five. Hopefully, people start banging at the door. We, you know, they show up, we whip it up there and it fills up. That'd be great.
I would love to see that.
But that's our, that's been our plan from the beginning. We, we think it's a, a good plan. The apartments have drawn a lot of interest. This is ready to get up and running. We're just running into an issue with this. It's just an extreme cost and if we knew where that road would really end up, that may help out, but, but we don't. We don't know if this development will come back here. We don't know if this building will flip. We don't want to build a million and a half dollars worth of roadway and rip it up. We can put in, you know, we, we had spoken about a gravel walkway. We can line it. We can, you know, however the board likes it. But that, that's, that's our two cents on it, I guess. And I'd be happy to continue to talk about it with you.
Do you want to comment any further, Tom?
I can't say anything intelligent. I, I just, I, I'm concerned, because we're deviating from what I understood the CUP program was going to be, I guess I would be hesitant to say, go ahead and build your fifth building as soon as you get this put up. I'm still looking to see some integration going on and maybe that means I should suggest you wait on that fifth building until you've done some more and can figure out where that road might go to hook those buildings up. I mean, as, as a trade-off to, to accept maybe a walkway only or something, just to, to keep the encouragement going to make this whole program go forward.
We showed no hesitation from, since we started this. You know, we said, we're going to come in, we're going to do the apartments. Our next step is to build a portion of the retail. We're not here 20 years later coming in for the retail.
Well, I appreciate that.
The apartments are underway and we've got the, the retail under, under design right now. And now we're stuck with, can we build it? Because it's going to cost some million, million and a half dollars to put a roadway in that we may have to rip up in five years and put somewhere else.
And I, and I, and I'm just trying to figure out the, the conversation here. Initially, when we presented the plan, the fifth building was an incentive to make sure there's a commercial component, right? You just shared with us today that you gave somebody, you're giving somebody all the residential building. I mean, we're, we're following through with, with what we presented.
Don't talk to me about Edgebrook.
And I, and I, I just don't understand the practical aspect of the planning here. We can do the pedestrian walkway because it's, it's reasonable. That's not a, a large cost. But I think there's some advantage to the town to not formalize a road that could potentially restrict, you know, a business that you may want to have in town from occupying this because ultimately, what my client, Mr. Flatley, would have to do at that point is contemplate the gain or the loss of what he's already invested in the project when we could leave it as, you know, a fairly substantial amount of land that somebody could be it as, you know, a fairly substantial amount of land that somebody could be mark, you know, somebody could be looking for. And I say that just kind of from the, you know, um, openly from, from the standpoint of, we field many calls from their marketing department, from Mr. Walker, um, where they ask, can you fit this size building in this location? And we'll work up a concept. Well, if we have a road in the way that he just spent 1.5 million on, or maybe decides not to go forward on, on the project because of the risk in that kind of an investment, then that changes the dynamic of what we can bring in on this project, and what we can offer, and how this project gets developed. So I, we're, we're trying to be, you know, reasonable, um, and it's unfortunate, I guess, that the interest at this stage is in the smaller retail, because I think if it was the next one over, there'd be more of a rationale on a, on a connection. But now that we're starting on the right-hand side, the very northern side, we, we are looking for the board to work with us on, um, you know, the, the interpretation of needing both connections. And, and that's why we're here, and we appreciate, you know, your input and time and understanding.
It's not, it's not just this work with the engineering and the, and the layout of the site and the development of the site. There's other things that we're doing out there, you know, uh, site testing and that type of thing. We're taking the whole site very seriously, and we're going about our business in a way that's not only, uh, making the development, uh, process a little easier on our end, but we're doing this for DES's benefit also. Um, we, we're, we're kind of, and I don't need to get into it here, but we're, behind the scenes, we're going a little above and beyond what we really need to do out there, uh, on the site itself. Um, you know, we're, we're, we're in this for the long haul, and, uh, we think we have, like I said, I think we have, we have a good game plan, and it's, and it's kind of right now, right at this point, it's kind of coming together the way we anticipated in a relative, in a relative way, so.
Neil, did you wish to say something?
Yeah, I'd just like to say is, um, so, maybe not this phase, but hypothetically, so throughout the whole project, you're at the end of the, the end of the project, you plan on continuing a road all the way across for that, um, connectivity, right?
We will, we, that's what the plan is, and-
And that's what the approval was-
And that's what we'll, it'll be part of the project-
Right.
-as we go forward with the different incremental site plan approvals.
My question from the beginning, even with this overall layout, is where we show the connectivity there-
Mm-hmm.
And it's just my two cents on it, because I don't know what's going to go in on, next to the apartments. My personal take is maybe that connection's better off on the DW highway side of that bill, you know, that big box building, as opposed to where it's shown. And showing a connectivity there versus towards the rear of the apartment.
Sure. I was thinking actually, a little bit different. I was thinking, why can't you have a road run along the bottom of that plan, that, along the property line, uh, to connect the rear of the apartment, um, site to the retail? And then, as you build and develop along the front, little side roads that connect to those developments?
So we have, I mean, we have some dynamics on-site that kind of play into that. There's the brook that runs through the property, um, and, you know, so we have the, the pond here, and then there's an outlet in a brook that runs through the property here. So, you know, we've been involved with Fish and Game on this site, we've gone through the permitting for that, we have an alteration to terrain permit, um, there's obviously, you know, DES, um, issues that Kevin was alluding to with the St. Obane property. So it's not as easy as, you know, just picking a path, because we have to, we have to show somebody the reason why we have to get that close, um, to the, you know, brook. And this is kind of alluding to what Mr. Walker just stated. The reason why this connection is here is because we're contemplating a big box. And we were trying to kind of hide this connection, because we didn't want a lot of traffic from this, you know, potential big box migrating into that residential site. But if this ends out being smaller retail up in here, or we get, you know, maybe one larger user and we can build around them, um, then maybe that connection ends out being a little bit quicker, because they might want that there, and then we gate the, you know, the residential, um, component and, and figure out some way to, to separate it. But this is all speculation, which makes this really hard. Um, and that's why we're asking for, you know, frankly, the board to work with us on this, is because it's, it is really hard to speculate what that next phone call is going to be, and, um, you know, how we would approach it from a permitting standpoint. If I went to Fish and Game and said, hey, we want to put this road right on the, you know, on the brook for no reason, just so we can leave this all wide open, that's going to be a tough sell.
Okay.
But if we have a user and we can say, hey, we, this is a good location, it's behind the building, and, you know, we, we have some rationale and reason, um, for the development, then we can have good, you know, meetings with them like we have throughout the years and, and, you know, work our way through the permitting process. It's just like the verbiage in, you know, the, the, the documents, it's just, it's not black and white, I guess, so, um, we'll take it one step at a time.
I appreciate the explanation.
Did you want to say anything else now?
Yes, I did. I wanted to, uh, talk to something Mr. Walker said when he was up talking, uh, when you talked about, Kevin, this, uh, retail that you're proposing now was somehow attracted to this site because of the residential, uh, which is already here. Did I get that right, or did I?
Yeah, to, to a degree, yeah. Our game plan from the beginning was to get the residential up-
Yes.
And we honestly thought it would probably take a little bit longer than it has, but I think our thought was, they'd want to see those residential buildings occupied, and then it would draw in, uh, retail, um...
I, if, with no road or no connection other than a footpath, which is good, um, it's, somebody's going to have to get out on the road to get to these places, right? And, and why go there? Why not go anywhere else, once you're on the highway, if you get on it? You know what I mean? So I'm just trying to get the nexus between these two. I'm not sure it's clear-
Well, there's, there's two reasons. You know, one, uh, one, they're going to have 200-plus units at some point in the apartments. Uh, right now, we're at 192 with four buildings.
Yeah.
Um, we've also got the residential development across the street from where this retail will be. So they're kind of putting themselves in the mix of two residential, uh, developments.
Okay. Was that, that's, uh, Webster Green, is it?
Yeah.
I mean, I think in general, I mean, just, a, a lot of times, the activity alone, and it's a vi, it's going to be a vibrant area, you know, new retail establishments typically attract, you know, active businesses, and you, you end out, um, I, I really think that people that are looking at occupying Mr. Flatley's properties are, are familiar with other properties of his, and they see how, over time, they become an active site. And you have these amenities that grow, and whether it's the, you know, the pedestrian connection, and ultimately, the vehicular connection, um, I think the connectivity from a vehicular standpoint internally is more of a convenience, you know, certainly. Uh, but it's still the same distance to drive. So from a marketing and a business standpoint, um, they look forward to that, because they're, obviously, we share the master plan, Mr. Flatley shares the master plan with them. Um, this is the ultimate goal, there'll be some kind of connectivity, you know, with vehicular access, but there's obviously an understanding that, that is market-driven, and typically with these projects, things do get phased in, especially, you know, with a, a property like this, that kind of, it, it covers a large, you know, uh, it's got an interesting geometry, let's put it that way, where it's, it's not square, it's not, you know, a rect, you know, a rectangle, where we're concentrating everything in, in one area, and it's easier to connect the sprawls. But I just think that certain property owners have a, a reputation and a history with retail establishments, and, you know, Mr. Flatley certainly has a good, uh, reputation for, for reinvesting in his properties and making sure they have a lot of amenities that they benefit from.
But if, Chad, if, taking Kevin's words, that it may take five to 10 years before you can put that road in, my experience today of what's going on in this area is that those restaurants at the northern end will go on bankrupt three times before you get the road in. I just don't see it. I don't see how you can claim that those restaurants are serving the needs of the residents in the apartments. Frankly, if I was in that apartment and wanted to go out for a meal, I'd probably go to the homestead and be done with it. I'm, I'm not convinced. I'm certainly not convinced in the current situation with box, that you'll ever get anybody in that big box store. Um, the one person you've, at one stage, talked to us about has gone into London Ferry. I just don't see it, but I still think Neil's suggestion was not a bad idea. I think we could build a road which basically hugs the borders of the, of the, the lower border of the, of the site, and then you could fill it in as, as, you could find somebody to do it. I'm calm, I cannot personally feel that what you're saying is going to work, is going to meet the object, object of the CUP. But that's my personal opinion. I don't know, and we can talk this, through this all night, but otherwise, if nobody's got anything further, I think I have to ask my colleagues if anybody wants to make a motion.
Going to open for any discussion?
Oh, sorry, I'll open it. Yes, I would be happy to open. Thank you. I always forget the public. Terrible. I'd like to open, and therefore, as everybody's agreement, we'll open this matter for public input. If anybody's interested in a butler or other citizen would like to make a statement, I'd be happy to encourage them to do so. And I'm certainly going to recognize Captain John Manuelli from the fire department, who's got a comment.
I actually specifically came to comment on this proposal. When the original plans and various iterations of the plans were, were shown to me, I did my review based on a two-phased, um, project. Phase one being the four apartment buildings, associated garages and clubhouse, and phase two being the fifth apartment building and the, uh, commercial component. When I reviewed the plans, um, the two phases basically give us incredibly good access to the property. We have access to Daniel Webster Highway, we have access to the road out to, uh, St. Obane, and to the buildings. The problem we run into here is that that fifth apartment building requires a secondary means of egress. That road that was proposed is excellent for that. Without that road, we cannot support the fifth apartment building. All of my calculations and all of our, our, you know, uh, availability of fire apparatus, et cetera, we cannot support that. The three buildings at the north end, if that wanted to be a separate phase, it has two different ways in and out, we have no problem with that. We cannot support putting the fifth apartment building up without that secondary means of egress. The plan originally allowed me to not require a secondary means of egress, as we've required in Edgebrook Heights and virtually every other development that's currently going on in town, because of the excellent access. That takes away that access. So we are not in favor of that.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Kevin?
During, during the process of the original, uh, overall development, we did have a lot of discussion with the fire department, as well as other departments and boards, about the apartment layout. And the original apartment layout had a roadway in with parking on both sides, um, to serve all the buildings. And through our discussions, we took great care to put in a layout that you see in front of you there, that basically provides a loop road that has access for fire vehicles, which we ran with a template as part of the, uh, approval process for the apartments, um, to specifically provide multiple ways to those back buildings. We also have a traffic report that supports all five apartment buildings without any additional, uh, impact to DW highway. Uh, this entrance is not going to be signalized, it's not going to be required to be signalized. I understand what Captain Manuelli is saying with the interpretation of the first, uh, layout, but it was never our intent to build upwards of 2,300 to 2,600 feet of road without knowing that was, what was going in there. Our design of the apartment buildings was to make everything as safe as possible. We don't have any trees that can fall across the roadway, uh, we have dual, we have a, a divided entrance, uh, we've got an entirely looped development that emergency vehicles can get through. Um, again, we have no problem putting in some sort of gravel way between the apartments and the development we're proposing that can support a fire vehicle if need be. I don't see a fire vehicle ever using it, to be honest. Um, but it would provide a walkway, it would provide a secondary vehicular access. If you, if you go out there, you could pull off a DW highway onto the grass and, and get into the site, if you wanted to, right now, for the apartments. If the board thinks it's worth continuing this to the next meeting, I'd happily take a site walk with you. We can go out there, we can walk it, and then it might give everybody a, a little bit better idea of what we're trying to deal with here. And the, the, the distance, the, the stream, the grades, um, the vast amount of land that things can change on a dime, uh, depending on what somebody wants. May, may, and that's up, it's your call, but I, maybe it, it would be worth it for the board to take a walk out there and, and check this out. And, uh, you know, take, take a look at it hands-on. Uh, but I can tell you, to put in a paved roadway from what we're proposing to the apartments is going to make what we're, what we're hoping to propose, uh, we're just going to pull it off the table. We're not going to be able to do it for a roadway that may or may not stay there. We could be looking at 1.5 million, we could be looking at 3 million plus the removal of the road if it needs to be ripped out, and it's just not economically feasible to do that.
Could I perhaps, taking your point at least, ask Captain Manuelli, is there any sort of construction of a road of a slightly more temporary nature that would meet the requirements of the fire department?
We would have to look at a set of plans and base on what their proposal is. I can't blanket say yes at this point.
I'm not asking you yes. I understand the point.
We, if we see the plans and if we approve of it, we can do that. Uh, again, we require secondary access. If we get adequate secondary access, we would be in favor of that.
Thank you very much, Captain.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, on behalf of, I've had some rec, saying, I'd like to offer my colleagues what they would like to say, think any further. Is anybody else of the general public? Oh, the lady at the back, please come and join us.
Okay.
Or ladies at the back. Are we going to get a, a chorus, or? Please, please sign in, let us know what you're thinking. We certainly would appreciate what your thoughts are. Are you each going to speak, or have we got a, have we got a spokesperson?
Uh, we kind of have two different points, I guess.
All right. Please, please feel free, when you're ready, to tell us what your thoughts are.
And stop us when we go off track.
Please use the microphone, and we do need to know your names.
Uh, all right. So my name's Katie Poirier, um, I'm at 11 Kimberly Drive, um, in Webster Green, so right across the street from where this proposal is.
Yes.
Um, can I just ask you guys, the, um, traffic study that you're referring to, do you know when that, what one you're referencing? Like the date? The year?
The date of the traffic study?
Yeah.
My guess would be 2014.
2014, April 2014.
Okay.
My guess was then.
Okay. Nope. All right. Sure. Thank you. So, uh, I did a little bit of research on, um, the New Hampshire DOT, and so, I can share this with you guys if you want to look. So in November 2015, just to pick a date, which one should I go with?
Either one.
So...
Or both.
So, November 30th, there was 15,320 vehicles- So, November 30th, there was 15,320 vehicles on north of Hilton Drive, right? So that would be by the apartments. As of November 2018, there is now 18,431 vehicles. That's 2,151 extra vehicles.
Could I ask, is this over a 24-hour period?
I don't, yes. Wait, no, it's a whole month, it's two months.
Oh, it's, okay, over a month, okay.
But that's a particular day.
Yep, I understand.
That's an overall 24-hour period.
Excuse me, is this some count or some report you're reading from?
Yeah, yeah, it's the DOT report.
The DOT report?
Okay, this is our report, I guess, huh? The report that was done.
If it says DOT, it's DOT.
I'm assuming it's DOT traffic accounts that they're pulling from.
Okay, it's from a counter. That's what I wanted to know, okay.
Just as another point, we'll take the 28th of November, 2015, there was 11,137 vehicles one day. November 2018, there was 18,431 vehicles. So that is a difference, wait, did I do that wrong? No, I'm sorry, right, 6,334 vehicle difference. That's a whole lot of extra vehicles on this road. And if they don't do the road, they're adding more because the apartments aren't even up and running and they don't have the access road, they're not helping the already congestion.
Point taken.
Is my point. And they're stating, I don't know where they're looking at as far as all these different access points, but in speaking with the New Hampshire DOT, they will not allow us as Webster Green to have a light. So, and that's right in between the restaurant and the retail, even if, because we are private drive, even if we pay for a light to be installed, they will not approve it because there is a light close down by the bowling alley. They say it's too close. So I don't know how that would, that secondary access would be available for, you know, for that.
Yep.
And, I mean, that's not my problem.
Well, for those of you, of course, who've heard me over the years, I wouldn't be very happy to see more lights anyway.
I know.
I certainly believe in roundabouts, but we won't get into that tonight.
Mm-hmm.
But if you're saying is the DOT are not going to allow, are you sure of that? Is it just for Webster Green? Or if one of their access roads just happened to be opposite Webster Green, would they agree? You don't know.
They would not. I have an email from Bill Lambert telling me that he would not entertain the thought of a light even if we paid for it.
Thank you for that comment.
So my name's Ashley Tenape, I'm also from Webster Green. So looking at their site plan, one of their entrances actually does appear to be directly across the street from Webster Green.
That's really why I asked the question.
Yes. We already can't get out of our road just with the increased number of cars. It takes me 15 to 20 minutes in the morning to take a left-hand turn, right now. I have to leave that much earlier to go to work. Most nights, it takes me probably about the same amount of time just to get from Bedford to my place because of the increased number of cars. They're saying that having the road between the apartments and the retail is not going to, you know, be anything because the apartments can go out onto DW Highway. The apartments aren't going to want to go out into DW Highway, especially not anywhere near that time, dinnertime. That traffic on that road is horrendous. You cannot get up and down that road. And as the fire marshal said, with having secondary access and all of that, we had an emergency at Webster Green where we needed a fire truck to come up. It took them 15 minutes to get to our place because of the traffic at that time. Without them having that secondary road to be able to go through the apartments and over to retail, it's going to be a mess. And honestly, putting in a footbridge, 2,300 feet, you know, walking path, if people are buying things at the retail store, nobody is going to want to carry their bags back 2,300 feet. I think that's just pointless.
I thank you for the point you take. Did you, madam, want to join in or have you just nodded in agreement with your two friends?
My only point was about.
Can you have to come up? Please, please, put your name on the list and so we've got a record of what you ought to say.
My name is Jan Jones and I also live in Webster Green, 75, Shelburne Road. My point was about the traffic. I also have to turn left onto Daniel Webster Highway in the morning to go to work, and the traffic is so evenly spaced from the light by the bowling alley and the medical center and St. Obane, and then further down, I guess the next light would be.
Bedford Road.
Bedford Road. It's evenly spaced. You cannot get out in the morning.
Okay.
And I don't want to get T-boned, so it's like everybody's playing chicken. Thank goodness, the bus comes, they stop, let the kids on the bus, and the bus driver's like, "Let's go, let's go, let's go." So they let the people out from Webster Green.
Yep.
But I'm leaving 25 minutes early just because I want to make sure I get to work on time.
Okay, thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
Thank you, ladies, all of you. Are you happy with, you've met what you've stated, you've all got your point, and obviously we'll let the applicant just comment on your points if you let them come back to the table when you're ready.
Yep.
So as you.
Please, please respond to those comments or add anything further you wish to say.
So as you may recall, Mr. Chairman, when we went through the conditional use permit project and also the site plan approval project, we were very involved with meetings and reviews with DOT relative to the apartment entrance and off-site improvements that will be contemplated at each one of the proposed entrances and exits to the property. So there is a significant amount of off-site improvements that will be occurring as this project goes forward, hopefully goes forward. And the, you know, the traffic study was reviewed, you know, by DOT, was approved. And just to talk, I mean, I don't have the numbers and the details, but when we do and we hire consultants to do traffic studies, they study the traffic over a period of time, which, you know, covers a broad range of events. It's not necessarily a day-to-day comparison because we don't really know what's going on in the area on any one given day, but we try to cover a range. So that's what the traffic study did. I believe it was prepared by Vaness, that was submitted and reviewed as part of the site plan approval for the apartments. The reality is, if we don't build the commercial portion of the project, the people in those apartments will be going somewhere to eat out and they will be getting on to Daniel Webster Highway. So we're not really changing anything by negatively, by not having that internal connection at this stage because ideally, yes, if we could accommodate it, I get that. It would take a little bit of the load off of Daniel Webster Highway. Maybe it'll convince people to actually using that pedestrian connection. There'll certainly be a connection to the Homestead Restaurant, I'm sure, whether you, we want there to be one or not. I mean, it's right there next door and I'm sure that they'll benefit from that. But from a traffic standpoint, you know, as we go forward, that will be addressed, you know, with the site plan review process and updated, and we'll be communicating with DOT. There's obviously phases of off-site improvements that need to be contemplated. I think that addresses what, did you want to add anything?
Yeah, just, you know, as part of the apartment development, we're going to be doing improvements on DW Highway. There's also going to be improvements for the northerly retail along DW Highway.
Sorry, we can't hear you at the back, it's very difficult for you.
I couldn't hear either, however.
I think you've had to say whatever, what Kevin's saying.
The improvements include both road widening, adding left-turn-only lanes heading southbound into the site. That's the same for the apartments, it'll be the same for the northerly retail. The center, the new connection in the center, which is south of Webster Green, north of the apartments, currently is proposed to have a traffic signal. That was by Vaness's traffic report. It may depend again what goes in there, when, at what point. If it's a big box, it'll go in immediately. If it turns out to be a bunch of smaller retail, it may be a certain point where a light goes in. I don't know, I don't know, I don't have an answer to that at this point.
DOT has specific warrants that you have to meet in order to trigger.
Ah, I think we all know this, yeah.
So it's, it's not something that you can request. I mean, we've done schools where we love to have signals and you just can't have them. So, but certainly what the lady said about DOT not letting a light, I'm sure is quite accurate. They can be quite difficult when it comes to that.
That's, they also have approved the improvements that have previously been presented to the board.
Okay. Does anybody want to add anything further? We'll close the public hearing, I think. Does anybody want to add any further? We can talk this all night and we don't really, I don't know we're getting anywhere, but we have two options before us. One is for a member of the board to make a proposal. An alternative is, which Kevin has offered, is for us to do a site walk and continue this matter. I'm open to all suggestions.
I'd just like to discuss a couple more things.
Okay, please do, Nelson.
Captain Manuelli talked about his need for this connecting road of some kind if the fifth building was built in the retail. I think that was what you were telling us. And I'd like to ask the applicant if this plan can survive without building the fifth building at this time, without the connection. In other words, if we left out the connection and we left out the fifth building, would that be something that you could live with? And I'm just asking the question.
I wish I had an answer for you right now and I don't.
Yeah.
I did speak with Captain Manuelli that if we don't do a paved roadway, we could do a gravel connection, which I know we've connected, we've discussed at our last meeting. We're still okay with doing that because we're not going to have to put in drainage and utilities, and if it needs to turn into a parking lot later, then it can turn into a parking lot later. We're not going to have to rip up pavement or re-line stuff or take out water lines or god knows what. I mean, there's all sorts of things that we could have done out here.
Yeah.
And I know, I know the board will remember my hot dog stand comment from probably three years ago, but we could stick a hot dog stand next to the entrance and we would meet the development agreement.
Yes.
That's not our game plan. We don't play games like that.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? That's not our intent. We're straightforward with you from the start, we're going to continue being straightforward with you.
That's not in question, I just wanted to get a feel for what.
Could I turn the question the other way around? If we granted you the fifth apartment, would you put in the roadway?
Gravel?
Would you put in a roadway that met the requirements of Captain Manuelli?
An NFPA gravel road could be put in.
To the point where it's wide enough for fire trucks and capable of supporting fire trucks?
Yes.
And is not going to collapse at the first time we ever drop a rain?
And you maintain it.
And maintain.
Oh, of course, maintain it, yes.
I think if we could work on that level.
I don't see, I don't see your.
Well, I think this, that's an if and a what and what. I don't think we can do, come to a conclusion on that this evening, so one thought therefore that I offer as my third alternative, do we continue this matter to allow the applicant and Captain Manuelli and the powers that be and including, of course, the staff, to have a discussion along that line?
I vote for that one.
I'm amenable to that.
Well, can somebody make a motion?
Does Tom want to speak? Tom looks like he was going to ask a question, but.
Well, I guess I'm trying to understand, if you can make a roadway that's sufficient for fire trucks, it would be sufficient for apartment dwellers as well, wouldn't it?
It just wouldn't be paved with, it wouldn't be the full.
I understand, and I'm not looking for utilities and all that kind of stuff to be in there. If you can put something in there sufficiently to make it so that there's reasonable connectivity between those apartments and the retail, I guess I'm finding us a lot closer to a solution than I thought we were. I mean, I got the impression when you're talking about a million and a half per road, that's all you wanted to put in for a road, but if there's a gravel road that could be put in that's sufficient to allow connectivity, aren't we at least meeting the intent of the CUP idea?
That's where I think.
I mean, I'd like to see the thing go forward, I really would. I'm just struggling with how do we, how do we understand that we're making progress in an area that we can continue to deal with other issues and not have them come back and point at one or the other and say, "Well, you let them do it," you know. The idea and the intent was that there was connectivity there, and I'm almost willing to go with just a walkway, but I think there needs to be more than that.
If we've got to go a little wider to support a fire vehicle, then I understand that.
If you don't block it off so that people could actually drive it and they wouldn't run off the road into a snowbank or something like that, I guess, you know, that starts to meet my minimum requirement, if you will. I don't know where the rest of the board goes, but it sounds like there might be something to do there.
I think that's where I was trying to get us to go, and I think maybe there's something that can be worked out there.
Yeah, if you want to continue the next, your next meeting, I'm sure we can.
We can talk that out and see what happens.
Probably have this thing ironed out in a couple of days.
Well, if that's a proposal from the applicant, I would like to suggest therefore that you and the staff and the fire department get in a room, lock the door, and come to the conclusion that this board can accept a recommendation that all three parties have agreed to. I'm not proposing the motion, you, somebody else has got it.
I move to continue this to which the February 5th meeting or January 22nd?
January 22nd.
January 22nd?
Yeah, should be able to bang it out by then.
Okay, I'll second that motion.
I'll call the question then.
With no further notice to a butters.
With no further notice to butters.
Although it was sort of.
I don't think there's.
Verbage.
I'd like therefore, that is a motion that's been put before the board. Anybody want to modify the motion any further? Otherwise, and additionally, do we want to take a site walk or not? I personally recall walking this site before, but I don't know if anybody else wants to again.
Well, and I've walked it before, but there are others on the board who haven't.
Probably covered with snow by the time we got there.
There's always a possibility. All right then, I've just called the question on the motion proposed by Mr. Koenig and seconded by Mr. Disco. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anybody against?
Against.
He's against it, so it's one, two, three, four, two, one.
Thank you all.
And on that, we will consider the matter.
Appreciate it.
In two weeks' time, in which case, I'd be very happy to invite the official chair of the planning board to come back.
Please come back.
Please, please. Ladies, obviously, your points have been taken, and if you want to come back on the 22nd, we'd be delighted to welcome you.
Well. Thank you, Alistair, you did a great job. I appreciate you handling that matter for us. Item 10 on our agenda is discussion and possible action regarding other items of concern. One of the things that was emailed to you guys and then also available to you when you got here is a draft of a bill, not a draft, a bill that's before the state legislature, House Bill 104. This bill came to the attention of town councilors and a request was put forth that the planning board provide some feedback as to what we think of it. I don't know if anybody's had a chance to kind of really dig into it in any detail for those that didn't have it before they got here tonight. I can give a sense of what the bill is supposed to do. And allow some discussion to proceed from there and try to answer questions as best I can. best I can. So with that, what the bill is supposed to do is create a three-person board that's a part of the Attorney General's office that would allow for a parallel opportunity to appeal decisions made at a local level from planning boards, zoning boards, and all of that, and parallel to what you can do in Superior Court. I think that the advocates for this have a sense that it could be a faster and less expensive process to appeal and have a hearing on local decisions. I think that there's a different constituency that looks at this and thinks maybe it won't accomplish those kinds of things, but has some other potential drawbacks as well. The bill goes into some detail laying out the mechanics for how this works, and there's some potential questions and discussion items regarding the mechanics of how it's set up and how it would actually work that could pose some problems. But I think that the general, the initial discussion is this concept of having some alternative to going to court as an administrative agency, a three-person panel that would be empowered to hear local land use board appeals of any variety in the same way that courts can. Is that a concept that finds some support among the members of the board or not? And then we can kind of dig into some of the mechanics of the bill to find out if we like or dislike the general idea. Is this draft one that's workable?
Mr. Chairman, much as I don't want to encourage any more money going to attorneys, and I apologize to you for saying that, but if you read the document on page three under section 21 dash M dot 25, which says filing fee, timing of appeals and board proceedings, if you read paragraph 1, the Latin numeral 1V, "The board shall accept appeals on a first come, first served basis and shall not accept a new appeal until the existing appeal has been resolved." Now, with my wicked mind, I sat and think if somebody's trying to stop a project going ahead, party A appeals, and that takes three months for it to be sorted. As soon as that's done, his or her partner can lodge a new appeal, and that could effectively prevent a project going ahead for as many people as want to object to it. And I think that's a very dangerous precedent, that in other words, a gang of we-don't-want-in-my-backyard citizens would be able to stop this indefinitely, almost. I know, in fact, it would put the onus on the three people to say, look, you're being unreasonable. But I hate to think of that as a process which could go on and on at least for two or three years and could kill the project. That's my only opinion on this whole thing. I've read the whole thing through a couple of times, and that's the thing I feel is what's wrong with it.
It's an excellent point. It's, I guess I can't really kind of offer an introduction or a comment that's neutral. I'm opposed to the thing. I think it's a terrible idea. I think there's lots of mechanical problems in how it's drafted. But even before that, I think that the general concept of having some alternative method to resolve local appeals isn't going to be faster or cheaper for anyone. Administrative agency appeals, appeals to the Department of Labor, appeals to the Board of Tax and Land, whatever they're called, they're not cheap. They're just as long, they're just as expensive. You treat them with all the intensity of a trial as you approach them because their consequences are exactly the same as a trial. So you gear up, you put witnesses on, you prepare your evidence, you do all the things that you have to do. A three-person panel having one body in the state that could hear these appeals rather than 10 Superior Courts isn't faster. They're limited to 20 hours a week, so they're not going to be full-time employees hearing these things. They're supposed to hear an appeal within 90 days, but what if they don't? Because they're busy, because they haven't finished the last appeal. There's no explanation of what that consequence is. The bill places this agency within the Attorney General's office. The Attorney General's office is not an adjudicative body. It's an advocate for one side or the other. And so it doesn't have any other decision-making or adjudicative functions within the Attorney General's office other than this. It says that the people that are on the board need to be well-learned in their field and work 20 hours a week and not accept any other employment that could create a conflict. Now, one of these people has to be an engineer. What engineer is learned in land use, wants to do this for 20 hours a week for state pay, and not take any other land use work? That guy didn't exist. Neither does the lawyer that's supposed to be on this panel either. I don't know.
Or retired judge either.
You know, I don't think that there's a retired judge, but at least conceptually there could be a retired judge that is bored and wants to spend some time, you know. I can't imagine why a retired judge would want to do those kinds of things for 20 hours a week. And I don't, it doesn't even describe what the pay rate's going to be. I think as you go through this, the petition has to pay a $500 filing fee for this. The filing fee for court is like 225. So it's half as much to go to court in terms of the filing fee. I mean, everywhere you turn in this thing, you look at this and you say, well, this just doesn't make any sense. Why would you do this? How could this possibly be better? It does grant this board with all of the remedies that a court has, which although it doesn't use the words in here, it includes the builder's remedy, which is the opportunity to proceed with your project as if a permit had been granted by the board and not by the local municipality.
Takes away local control.
It does take away local control, and the courts have that authority too, but they almost never exercise it. They usually will remand to the locals for further consideration consistent with something that they've done. Only in the most extreme circumstances does a court say enough is enough. We're granting your approval. And the Supreme Court recently did so in that case from Hanover, Lebanon, that we talked about. Lebanon? Hanover. I think you're right. It was Hanover. But it's extraordinarily rare. That's the only time that I've ever heard of it being done. If you grant this board that authority, though, without any particular guidance, they may feel free to give that as their usual remedy. It doesn't say what happens if you don't like what this board does. Do you appeal it then to court, or do you got to go to the Supreme Court from this board? I'm sure that it says that answer here. Well, I think it probably says that answer here. I didn't find it.
Don't say that, Mr. Chairman.
It does talk about representation by non-attorneys. And in that section, it says that other engineers and architects and land surveyors, however, if you read it, it suggests that that's the only people who can represent you. So if you actually wanted an attorney, I'm sure you're allowed to have one constitutionally, but I'm not sure what this is, what's going on in here. So I'm not sure I ever thought that the underlying intention to have some faster process was the right way to go.
This isn't it.
But this particular path, to me, has lots of problems in it. I know that Neil and Dan, you probably didn't have as much time to dig into it as I did, or Alistair and Nelson knew about it three hours, or six hours ago.
Yeah.
So they had the afternoon to look at it.
I only got through a couple pages of it. I do want to call your attention to one thing. There's three members of this. One of them must, shall be an attorney licensed to practice of law. One shall be a retired judge, and at least one member shall be a professional engineer. That's the three members of this board. Okay?
In essence, at least for us, it is.
I just wanted to point out that there is a judge involved. You have to have a retired judge on this board.
Yes.
Okay. So I just thought it was completely unworkable as I read through it. And for all the reasons you've cited, I'd be certainly not recommending that this thing be enacted. So we've got to write a letter to that effect. I guess that's what they're asking us to do.
This is a request from the town council for us to offer them an opinion, not necessarily.
It's a request from Bill Boyd. It's not a request from the town council. This has not come before the town council.
Okay.
And so while he is a member of the town council and he has requested it, it was a request by Bill Boyd.
No, thank you for the clarification that it hasn't been something that the town council has considered or asked for an opinion on. If we're to offer some feedback or some opinion, I think it is in that direction to Bill or to the town manager to somewhere for anybody to consider.
If I can clarify, I guess. Bill saw this come up on the legislative roll or whatever it is, and started to query it. He sent it to Tim Thompson. He sent it to Eileen and wants to bring it before the council for discussion, but he wanted to get some information back from Tim and from the planning board on what they thought of it before he started to try and bring a discussion before the council for potentially, I guess, maybe a letter of either recommendation or anti-recommendation, whatever, denial from the town council towards this bill. So that's where this is coming from.
Thank you for the explanation. With that in mind, if we are to provide some feedback, do you think that's a letter, a memo, an email, the video that's being prepared right now? Is that, you know, what do you think is the product of the discussion?
I think a letter or memo would be awesome, just a general consensus statement.
Your microphone's on.
A letter or memo would be awesome, or a general consensus statement would be sufficient to say that we agree, disagree, or we agreed to disagree with each other. That, you know, so from all the things that I'm hearing between you and Nelson and whatnot, I can't see anything good in this process. And so I don't believe that, I can't imagine that the planning board's going to come forward and say that they find something useful in this. But if they, if people want to make those comments or thoughts known, either through me or to the town council, that'd be awesome.
This piece of legislation and the concept in general has the support of the Business and Industry Association, who have done some op-eds with the union leader, and their focus is on the availability of workforce housing. And they believe, I'm sure it's not related to MERRIMAC because we approved 1,000 housing units, but in some towns where there's a desire to do some developments and there may be some unreasonableness from the local boards, and there's a desire for people that are trying to develop their companies and are looking for places for their employees to live, to push through that process in an efficient way. And that's why the BIA supports it. I think that they view it as a way to make it a little less expensive to get developments for workforce housing. I don't know how many times that would actually hit the ground with that effect. I mean, you'd need, you know, what town is it that made a decision? Does their decision have the basis for reversal? Did they make some legal error? And would this board efficiently handle it better than a court would handle it? I mean, those are all the things that I think are my questions. But the advocates think that it relates to and supports the idea of developing workforce housing. My first observation was not that this is an aid to developers to help them quickly get through some unreasonable board. To me, I thought what Alistair thought. This is an invitation to every abutter on the planet to jam it sideways by appealing them for anything. He didn't say you have to have a reason. You don't really, you know, go have a hearing, have your argument in 90 days, maybe, but if they're backed up, I don't know what happens. You just kind of continue to have your appeal. And, you know, five different abutters can ask for them, and it says we're going to deal with them one at a time. So we're going to deal with the first appeal, and they all have to be filed within 30 days, but they're all sitting there in the hopper waiting to have separate hearings. I mean, if you're trying to squash a project, this is a way to get it sideways.
Good mechanism.
With an administrative process.
Yeah.
And that may not, that may not be.
It's a final wording that the bill would take, and so they might resolve. I mean, the way that's worded does sound kind of poor. Earlier on, it says only accept an appeal after all available local level appeals have been completed, which kind of implies one appeal, you know, not five or six different appeals. And maybe they would just be able to say, okay, we have five appeals and they're all the same thing. Let's just take them all as one unit, which the court tends to do and stuff like that.
Yeah, the court has some authority to consolidate appeals together and.
So that might be written into this at some point in the future. So I'm not sure that that's a super strong argument, but I understand where you're coming from.
But surely, Tom, all we can do is comment on what is put in front of us.
Yeah.
And put, as it is written, as the thing is written, the House bill is written, that is a way it could be misused, and I would agree, misused. In other words, what I think I'm saying is if this is a proposal which has the approval of the BIA, then it needs rewriting in a form which doesn't allow mischievous misuse.
I don't know. I have no contact with the BIA on this bill, so I don't know whether they've looked into this specific language and they like all the words that are chosen, or they just simply like the concept of having a, they're calling it a housing appeals board, but this could be commercial properties and anything else, because any local decision can be appealed. And frankly, you know from our own business that probably one out of 10 applications that we hear is a housing-related one, and they're almost all commercial-related proposals. Variances from the zoning board can also be heard. And so you can appeal your variance to this, and the abutter can challenge you there. And then when you get done with your variance and you go to the planning board to get their approval, you get another chance to appeal that decision and see how it goes. I do, I did touch base today with a lobbyist friend who has some familiarity with kind of different things that have been proposed at different times, and am told that there's a better version of this that the Senate is working on that hasn't quite made it into a draft yet. So I don't know what that means.
Hmm.
I'll look out for a better version.
No comment.
Of this in the Senate. One of the things that is apparent to me after having kind of poked around at the municipal association's view of this is a similar bill, the same bill or a similar bill passed the Senate in the last session, and the House killed it. And so that's a peculiarity, that's something to me that really doesn't look like it's a very strong piece of legislation at all. It made it out of the Senate last year. So, you know, don't underestimate it. The sponsors are two Republicans, one Democrat, all focused down in the Hudson, Pelham, Londonderry area. I think Hudson is the overlap for several of them, so I don't know if there's been a.
Hills, right? They're from Hills?
Sharon Carson is from Hillsborough County, which is.
Oh, that's the county. I didn't know that was a town of hills.
Auburn, Londonderry, and Hudson, I think, are her towns.
Okay.
The fellow is from Peterborough, which is obviously not in this corner, and Lynn Ober is from Hudson.
Okay.
I don't know if there's some specific developments that are related to things down in that quarter that have brought this idea forward.
Mr. Chairman, having listened to what Counselor Koenig asks, can I suggest on behalf of all of us that you draft an answer which says that whilst we understand the concept, we don't like the form in which it is appeared in front of us?
Do we like the concept? Because I don't.
No, I don't like the concept.
Well, I think the Superior Court does fine with the work that they're doing at this point. We have a judicial review program. Why build yet another layer into the system?
Well, in that case, I refrain, Mike, that we don't like the concept, and we certainly don't like the bill in its current form.
I think.
That's better.
I agree with, I mean, if you want to hurry along the Superior Court, you have the, the legislature could certainly say that these cases get priority on the docket, or we appoint one judge within the Superior Court to, the same way they do the Business Court, prioritize all of these things. Or, you know, some things that nudge the judicial process to go a little bit faster. You don't create a, and then get into the cost of all these people that are employees and the Attorney General's office is talking about administrative help and support and office space.
Another $72,000, yeah.
Office space, yeah, in the Attorney General's office. They'll love that.
Yeah.
They might want a new building.
Clerical work.
Well, there's a fiscal note at the end of all of this text that explains what the Attorney General thought about it and the municipal association. The municipal association actually is neutral on this. They believe that there's, that a three-person panel could be expected to arrive at equally good decisions compared to a judge, I think, in their explanation. I don't know that they've addressed kind of a lot of the rest. They're probably also not hearing from members one way or another on it. And of course, we're not a member, so guess what we think? Doesn't matter to them much at all.
So this doesn't say the municipal association is neutral. It merely says they can't determine what the impact on municipal cost would be.
No, I looked at their legislative report on their website for this, and that's what said they're neutral. That's where I learned that it passed the Senate last time because they wrote it up in their little blurb about it.
Thank you.
So the one thing that I would sort of add to the discussion about writing a memo or writing a whatever, this thing gets its first hearing in the House Judiciary Committee at 10:30 tomorrow, and it may not survive that. And so why don't we just see if that doesn't kill it before we start writing letters anywhere? And so why don't we just see if that doesn't kill it before we start writing letters anywhere? It may not matter, you know, come noon time tomorrow.
Well, in that case, Mr. Chairman, I amend my further, if it does get through, would you please write saying, "We don't like it and we certainly don't like it in the way it's written"?
Is it sufficient to allow me to bring that thought to the council, should this come up as a discussion item? Planning board was underwhelmed with the overall idea?
Yeah, I think that certainly that's an adequate way to convey the message to the town councils for the discussion. And it'll say, because I'm not going to write the letter, I'm actually just going to turn to Robert and Tim and say, "Write something for me." So let's save everybody all of that effort.
We love your honesty. Thank you very much.
They're so good at it. And they've got the letterhead and everything, so...
Get him a ream of paper.
I don't have any other items of discussion, and I don't want to...
Yes, you do, Mr. Chairman. Two other items of discussion.
Oh, yes, Neighbor Works, who we've approved for the development near where the soccer fields were going to be, the...
The revised Milton.
Yes.
The Milton associate revised thing.
Reverend Wright's property is looking for an extension of our approval for them, an additional six months. Robert?
Yes, for both the lot line adjustment and the site plan.
Generally speaking, we don't have a very high standard for granting these six-month extensions, and I'm certain we could, you know, look at why they're asking for the extension, but if not necessary, what's more important?
The bureaucracy of the money flow.
They've got to get the money from the New Hampshire Housing Association.
The housing association has to get it from the federal, and it goes on and on, and it's like this...
I make a motion, Mr. Chairman, we grant the request for a six-months extension.
I'll second the motion, Mr. Chairman.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? 6-0-0 for that bit of business. Our March 5th planning board meeting coincides with the school's deliberative session, and I wanted to open up some discussion to see if it's the will of the board to reschedule or change the date of our March 5th meeting so as not to conflict. I think that as we've experienced this in the past, it affects Lynn as the moderator of the school department to be able to be at that meeting when she could also be here. Other than that, we tend to be able to operate relatively normally for this particular date. I also understand from talking to Tim that it's particularly disruptive to their department if we start moving our meetings around because it starts to overlap other meetings and is the room available and do they have the memos able to go out on time and all of that.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we continue the schedule for the planning board irrespective of the school deliberative session.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Nelson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No opposed.
One opposed. Any abstaining? 5-1-0 with Counselor Koenig opposed. As I was over recused, I had, was checking my email, and our date for annual review with the town council was communicated in an email, and it's May, calendar, May 9th, just for your information or for your own calendar. Alastair and I usually attend. I think Nelson usually comes for support, which everybody is welcome to do.
I'll be there.
Yep. Tom will be there, able to do that, to communicate with us. I don't think that it requires any further detailed discussion with that. Does anyone else have any other items of discussion or concern?
I had one thing for Tom. Tom, we had a discussion earlier in the year about our desire to inform the council and so on of our support for the New Hampshire Municipal, becoming members of the New Hampshire Municipal Association. I understand that right now is budget time, and they're working on the budget, and I had spoken to Tim earlier today, and he felt it would be your responsibility to see if you could get that into the budget.
I will definitely be making every effort I can to do so.
Okay, thank you. That's all we can ask.
Thanks. Thank you. I don't remember when that comes up, but it must be, I suspect it's in general government, which is the third of our meetings usually. So we meet tomorrow night.
Yeah, that's why I wanted to bring it up.
Wednesday and Thursday of next week.
Yeah.
Any other items of discussion or concern?
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you, Nelson.
Don't worry there.
Okay, approval of the minutes of December 18th and the site walk minutes of December 29th.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we adopt both sets of minutes with no further modifications.
One comment on that.
Oh.
The site walk minutes apparently are missing the property that was walked, so we might want to add that.
I'll be happy for you. I'll accept the blame for that one.
Yeah, 63 Wilson Hill. Okay, first, is there a second for Alastair's motion?
Second.
Second by Nelson. There's a request for modification from Robert, which we normally don't require motions or seconds to adopt. We'll add that modification. Any other changes or amendments to the minutes? Seeing none, the...
Are we doing them both together?
Yeah, both together.
I abstain.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? And one abstaining, 5-0-1 to approve those minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I would therefore like to make a motion that we adjourn.
Second by Dan. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? 6-0-0, we're done. Thank you very much for all of the hard work tonight, and don't forget to turn your microphones off.